Vote for sale.
Tom, you want to lead us in the pledge when it's time?
Oh, I guess I can, as long as I don't forget whether it is. All I have to do is start, really.
Okay, we're going to get started here. I don't know what's going on with my microphone.
Kind of anxious.
It's going to be okay. Okay, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, June 7th. If anyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public with its hands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Bonnie. Klaus?
Yes.
Gore Falet?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Mayor?
Here.
Wheelock?
Crawford?
Here.
First, we have approval of the minutes. We have our minutes of May 17th, 2017. Anybody have any changes or additions or anything with those minutes? Move to accept?
Court.
Moved by Commissioner Gore Falet, supported by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. It's our chance for first public comment. Hold on. First public comment, Bonnie, could you read the rules, please, and then I'll... We have a couple of statements to kind of keep control, so go ahead.
Chris has handed out cards, and as you come up to speak, if you could just give me the card, it just needs to have the spelling of your name so that we get it right for the minutes. And, "Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The Chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, but shall not exceed three minutes. The Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the Chairperson."
Okay, so a couple additional comments. We have a lot of people here, so I'm not sure how many really wanted to speak. We're going to stick to the three minutes per person. We're also going to stick to the one time per issue. So if you speak on the land sale, it's one time about that. I will, when we get to the sale of property, which is 9B on the agenda at the moment, we're going to have a special public comment at that time. So I would ask... That will be after the Commissioners have actively discussed this and after we have a presentation about the sale of this property. So with that in mind, I will... And Cheryl, did you have something as well? That animal control?
Yes, I wanted to ask if we could have animal control placed on a study session for next Wednesday. It was supposed to be the agenda, I believe, for the 21st.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask if we could move that to next Wednesday, the 14th. We've gotten, you know, obviously, a lot of concern has been expressed. I know within this Board, there's a lot of concern about this issue, and I think that it would be appropriate to give it its own study session, and so I'm requesting that we schedule animal control for the 14th.
Okay, so, and the reason that we wanted to bring this up now was that if anybody had public comment to make about animal control, that they would know that that is... We may have a study session about that next week. So just kind of trying to keep things to what the agenda is today, okay? And I think we can discuss that fact about the possibility of that further on in the agenda, okay? Okay, so those things being said, would anybody like to come and make first public comment? Georgia.
Hello again. Georgia Durga, 6345 Linters Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. And I would like to talk about the pension, payment of the pension. And as you know, I'm past Director of the Commission on Aging for quite a long time. I know we had a sizable fund balance, but we were building that up to purchase a new computer system because the one that was there and probably is still there is sorely outdated and inadequate. And so, in reading through the resolution, I saw that the Commission on Aging was going to be contributing almost $750,000. And although I agree they should be contributing something, I know that we've contributed to the Pension Fund the whole, almost 28 years that I was here. And so I just feel that the 750 is disproportionate to the rest of the Departments of the County. But I do agree that they should also contribute to the issue, and I wish you luck on solving this issue because it's very complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make first public comment? Mr. Roth.
How are you tonight? John Roth, Parks and Recreation President, Grand Travers County. Coming to you by request of some of my members of my Board, not a quorum, but just a few, who are concerned about some of the actions of the Board and where we're leading with the parks. We have been good soldiers. We donated Bitner and Keystone to you guys to try and sell. We are still concerned that property doesn't get sold at market rate, not under. That was supposed to be a bunch of baseball fields, and we do understand we're 20 years away from doing anything with that, so we're not going to worry about that at this time. We will maintain the ones at the Civic Center with the American Legion, though. So if I see a "For Sale" sign on the Civic Center, I'm not going to be real happy. Number two, this property that you're going to talk about tonight, and I'm not going to go into much depth because I know you're going to cover it very well. Whitewater Property, there are a couple minor concerns that we have on who owns it. There are... I know legal counsel said we don't have any encumbrances there. I disagree a little bit. Maybe not total legal encumbrances, but there are some written deals that allowed certain people to use the property, and that will dictate who owns the property. So a little bit concerned about that. When you go forward, I think you need to consider that. Parks, at this point, then, want to keep the rest of them together. Parks Board, that I've talked to, the few members, they want to see the rest of the nine parks kept together in one. They're very concerned about the thoughts of getting rid of them and selling them off. We are still digging into who owns and what encumbrances are on those properties. Power Island's a perfect example. We all think that Grand Travers County owns Power Island, don't we? Not a chance. Federal government owns Power Island. And I'm not going to get the agency quite right, but the federal agency that provided the funds to buy Power Island is a federal agency for the Land Conservancy. I believe it's called... I don't think it's GAS because that's different. It's probably Bureau of Land Management today, but 1975, they gave the money to buy Power Island. The misnomer that the Powers bought the island to give it to the county is wrong. We found the documentation that shows that's not the case. Powers saved Power Island from being developed because that was the plan, but it's actually the federal government bought the island. So if we want to get rid of that or sell it, we've got to pay them back the $500,000 plus interest to sell it, and if we want to give it away, we've got to get their permission. So we're getting into this. We're delving into all these things. It's good to know. I'm not against any of us knowing what our properties are for, how we got here, where they should go, what they can be done with, but we're not there yet. We're still figuring it out. The other one that worries me is that when families have donated, like Twin Lakes... Can I get just a few seconds? Just a few?
A few seconds, finish your thought.
Okay. Twin Lakes, families donated these properties. We're going back trying to reach the families. Many of these families are gone. If we then sell the property, what are we telling the families? Don't bother. Don't give to Grand Travers County. We don't want it. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Oh, my. Okay. If you would like to step up, go ahead and step up to the podium in an orderly fashion. What do the green cards mean? Do they mean they agree?
Hello. I'm Steve Davis, 9566 Michaels Road, Kingsley. We are in a lot of debt. Now's the time for this Board to show common sense, learn from past mistakes, display some fiscal responsibility, and show the voters that you have the guts to make the hard decisions we all know have to be made. Well, number one, bonding is a terrible choice. All that does is to continue to kick the ball down the... Or continue to kick the can down the road to make things much worse for the residents of our future. Number two, another millage. We are already one of the highest taxed counties in the state, even though we have a building boom and property values have been going through the roof. In the last couple of years, you've added the Veterans Millage, the Commission on Aging Millage, the Road Commission Millage, and even Raise the Beta Millage. And I'm not against any of these groups at all, but continuing to pile on taxes solely on private property owners is not fair, it's not equitable, and it has to end. You say you're all for affordable housing. Affordable housing isn't just when you pay upfront for a home, it's the ongoing cost, which millages are a huge part that make housing affordable in the future. How about figuring out how to raise funds from tourists or other short-term visitors to our area and not just continue to take more and more from those of us who invested our lives here? Tax vacation rentals on Long Lake? I don't know. Number three, sell county assets. This is the hard choice that has to be made. Starting with this 160 acres in Whitewater Township, sell it to the highest private property bidder so it can start contributing to private... To property taxes in the future and show the people that you're serious about addressing this crisis. Then move forward with selling other properties our county just doesn't need to own and can't afford. With this huge debt, there really is no other choice. Finally, I read the article regarding Commissioner Klaus in the Record Eagle. I just want to commend Mr. Klaus on his knowledge, his common sense, and his courage to speak up and have the guts to make the hard decisions which will truly benefit the future of our community. As a taxpayer and voter, I want to say thank you and keep up the good work. And thank you all for this opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brenda Earl. I live at 124 East 17th Street in Traverse City. And we face the serious problem of funding the county pension. This enormous burden is a legacy left by your predecessors and the decisions they made. I urge you to consider a solution that does not result in losing precious recreational land for public use forever. Please accept the proposal of the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy for the beautiful Sand Lakes area in Whitewater Township. And there's a caveat, I guess, from someone else that pointed out that may not be so clear in terms of ownership and everything, but once that's taken care of, then that... I think that would be the best solution on that one. I would also like the Commission to accept the offer of Mr. Wolf, the Conservancy's Director of Land Protection, to review the county's complete inventory of properties for similar arrangements. Maybe I'm unusual, but I'm also in favor of a millage because I feel... I view a millage differently. I view a millage as a time-limited investment in our community, which allows us to both fund the pension and preserve our recreational lands. I'm also in favor of looking into a bond sale because I have some experience with that, with a county. As I said before, we are dealing with the burden of the legacy created by your predecessors. Your decisions on how to solve this problem will affect this entire community for generations to come. As Commissioners, what legacy will you leave? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know if... They can't see it at home, but the audience here has green cards that they are lifting up to say, and I believe... Correct me if I'm wrong, that's "we agree"? Yes, okay. Just making sure. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Fisher. I live at 2495 Feneff Road in East Bay Township. Longtime trail enthusiast, longtime TART supporter, longtime TART Board member, past TART Board President. So we've had... At TART, we've had sort of a unique opportunity to see what this land that's for sale means to this community. I'm going to call it the Greater Vasa Area. And part of our role was to bring user groups together, see who they were, what their interests were, so hikers, bird watchers, bikers, classic skiers, backcountry skiers, you name it, we got everybody at the table. In interacting with these people and looking at what the vision is for this area, it's incredible what this area can mean and what it could develop into, not only economically but from a recreational standpoint. So you can... It's significant. You can also look at it from the perspective that it's 160 acres in roughly 20,000, and it might seem like a small or insignificant piece. We can still manage it. And perhaps to some degree, that's true. However, another one of our roles is to find a way for our user groups to interact harmoniously. We represent non-motorized. We also recognize that there's motorized capabilities out there, people with ORVs, and we need to find a way for these groups to interact, again, in a non-conflicting manner. So the 20 acres gets... Or 20,000 acres gets smaller kind of fast, and once it's gone, it's gone. It's a beautiful area, right in the middle. I think we need to think about the future. Again, when it's gone, it's gone. This is a question, and I don't expect an answer, but if the Conservancy's bid isn't the highest bid, is there an opportunity to do a fundraiser to keep this within the public domain? You know, I don't know how this is conducted. I guess that's for you all to discuss, but again, I'm holding the green card. I think we should keep it, and I think we should have a vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? People coming up.
There's a gentleman way out there.
What's that? Okay, they're coming.
Good evening. My name's Randy Smith, 6222 Bunker Hill Road, East Bay Township. And I recognize Sonny, sorry to see your arm such a case. But like Georgia Durga, I was a county employee for 10 years as the Resource Recovery Manager and helped the county establish its solid waste management planning efforts. And I think there might be an unintended consequence of the sale of the 160 acres. And I don't want to diminish the challenge that you have in front of you for making decisions about funding the pension that's occurred. Never seemed that drastic when I was around. But the point of selling that property to a private developer would open the solid waste management plan, and at the time that the plan was adopted, and it took multiple years, you know, I know I spent at least two years negotiating with the units of government, all the townships, holding all the public meetings about establishing that 160 acres as a landfill. I don't remember what involvement you had, Sonny, but I know you were at the table at least as a county Board member, if not a committee member, over time. And it was a... It was... There was an effort that was put forth that was ultimately agreed upon with all the local units of government to preserve this in the public interest, to allow local decision-making. Without a disposal option, the county is subject to state decision-making and should a crisis occur. And so by having this... I'll use quotes around 160. It allowed the county to basically do whatever we wanted to do, and it was a big "we". It was everyone inclusive, it was all-inclusive, and even Jasper Reese voted for it, if any of you remember Jasper. And it didn't come easy. And so you may have looked at some of these things, but I hadn't had the pleasure to have heard of anyone reference the interconnections with the solid waste management plan or the unintended consequences that could arise, unlike the Twin Lakes and the Power Island and where the deed restrictions are actually written into the document. There may be some deed restrictions I wasn't aware of, or lease communications or memorandum of understanding. If you're forced to sell this piece of property, the only thing that I could come up at this time without doing more research is that your own deed restriction, that allows you to use that as a disposal option, which would then again give the local control to you, the local community. And it would definitely require the...
Finish your sentence, but we've got to move on.
It would definitely require the cooperation of the Department of Natural Resources and the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy if... And if you had a prayer of doing that at all, and I could talk to you at more length about this if you so desire. Thank you. And good luck.
Anybody else?
We've got a guy out there.
Yes, come on up.
We could have some people from the outside queue up behind there.
They can. You guys can get in line if you would like to speak. You can... There's a door over here. Hang out off to the side. Thank you.
My name is Forrest Jones. I live at 101 North Park, Suite 311 in Traverse City. While there's been some interesting discussion, I think we've been having the wrong discussion. This Board of Commissioners needs to do something different than selling things, and that's something different that I would suggest is getting rid of projects that are unnecessary. I happen to think that the removal of the dam is a good idea. It's going to improve the water flow, it's going to make for more natural habitat, it's going to come with federal money and state money, and you can't afford a dime of it. You have other obligations that need to be addressed. I suggest that the first thing you do is pull out of the next dam removal and save that money. It makes no sense for you to save money you don't have, or, excuse me, to spend money that you really don't have. Likewise, there are things going on in the Road Commission. I will point out to one that I know very well personally. I used to live out on Peninsula Drive, and last summer, a perfectly good road was repaved. There were no ruts, there were no potholes, it was just a nice road. We came along, or the county came along, paved it over, put in nice banking. In some cases, it was as much as 12 inches above the level of the previous road, and I can point out where those are. And what we've managed to do before I sold my house was create a raceway. Before, you couldn't go on that road at above about 50 miles an hour, or you'd go off on some of the curves or have to brake heavily. Now you can do 65, and you don't even have to change your steering wheel. That was money wasted. We shouldn't have done it. We never got an answer from the Road Commissioner about why it was done. It was, "Oh, we're going to take the trees out so we don't have any icing on the highway or on the roadway in the winter. Oh, we're doing this to get an eight-foot separation. Oh, we're doing it because the road is in such bad shape." None of those were necessary. So again, I would suggest that you look at projects in the Road Commission to determine whether or not they're really, in fact, necessary. And if there's a road out in Fife Lake or farther up on the peninsula that is damaged and potholed, then do it. But if it's a good road and it can wait two or three years, wait. You don't have the money. You have a $50 million obligation. You don't have the money to worry about whether or not it's a good project or not. The question is, is it necessary? You, not you personally, but the Boards in the past created this problem. They went out and spent money that was supposed to go for the bond issue and spent it on other things that I'm going to guess were not absolutely necessary. If they were necessary, they would have been available to put before the voters. Lastly...
We do have to keep it to three minutes, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
We have a lot of people who want to talk, so we do have to keep it to three minutes.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, hello. My name is Eric Dryer. I live at 12434 Peninsula Drive.
Can barely hear you. A little louder, please, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's good.
My name is Eric Dryer. I live at 12434 Peninsula Drive in District 1. And I want to thank you very much for doing these jobs. I know they have to seem thankless, but democracy work is, I hope, a good thing. I appreciate the difficult decisions that you're faced with. There are no easy answers here, they already would have been found, I suspect. But I'm here to speak about those areas that are designated parkland. I think we all know that one of the wonderful things about our areas is that they really enhance the quality of our life. Our parks allow people with limited means to get out and enjoy the outdoors, and if you have been to any of our county parks, almost any day of the week, but particularly at holidays, you'll see that they're just filled, and people are enjoying the wonderful environment that they have. The sale of the parkland to address an immediate problem like this results in an irrevocable loss, and it's not one that some future Board would be able to correct. And I ask you to think about that, and I stand here really not for myself, but for future generations that I would hope would be able to have our parkland in place. In thinking about this issue, I've wondered a little bit if this might actually damage the reputation of our county as a desirable area to come and live, and that a long-term impact might actually be less growth and therefore less tax revenue for succeeding generations that sit in your seats and are required to make the hard fiscal decisions that I know are a part of being on the county commission. And therefore, I would really ask our county Commissioners, given our history, there have been many cases in the past, I can think of the library and, most recently, Beta and, you know, Commission on Aging, where people perceived a need and they stepped up and they were willing to open their checkbooks. And before we sell parkland, I wish you would consider a millage or some alternative way to give our constituents a chance to be able to step up. And if they don't, then I know, you know, your options would be very limited, but these things get lost and they never come back. And many of you have been on the Board long enough to know that good public policy is a key, key component of having a good community. And I would ask that you don't turn our parklands into parking lots without a voice of the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gilman.
You guys do get to make some difficult decisions. As you know, what I stand for and what I believe is that good government is that is...
You need to say your...
Jason Gilman, 933 Avenue D. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good government is that which is as small as possible to perform its necessary mission. First of all, sell the land to the Land Conservancy if it's the highest bidder. If it's not the highest bidder, we sell it to the highest bidder and get it back on the tax rolls. Part of the problem that we have in this county is the fact that we get a lot of land off the tax rolls, some of the most valuable land off the tax rolls, and a lot of us have to pick up the slack who are still paying our taxes. Secondly, the pavilions. It's a $26 million operation that operates on a 28-acre campus. I did a business valuation model on it, and with its $26 million in operational cost, some numbers that have come out of that, given the financial risk, which is very low for this type of operation... for this type of operation, a small growth, 2% growth, over the next 10, 20 years, and then a discount for the business value for quick marketability, the calculated current valuation is $58 million. That is what it is worth as a business. Saleable market value of the pavilion as a business in place is approximately $43 million, not including the incurred liabilities or the physical property and assets. And I want you to take, consider this carefully. Commissioner Wheelock says that it doesn't cost the county anything. What about lost opportunity costs? There are a lot of assets that are tied up and not financially performing for Grand Travers County. The sale of the pavilions would solve the pension problem that the county faces right now. It'd put the property back on the tax rolls and reward the taxpayers who built it with a final solution to a serious, ongoing financial crisis, which is the pensions. As well, owning service facilities that duplicate tax-paying private enterprises far from necessary, moral, or appropriate. There's no reason for the county to own a facility when private operators will handle as many patrons likely doing so more efficiently and providing better service at lower cost. Add to this, the 2014 agreement for the Garfield Road former health facility. The pavilions have been operating and are operating on a lease that gives them the use of that facility for four years at no cost. So yes, it is costing the taxpayers. The last time the county was so benevolent, Traverse City Light and Power earned $30 million from the use of the county dams, leaving them in a state of disrepair, and now with ongoing removal costs that are consistently exceeding projections. It's time for the county board to own up to its fiduciary responsibility and stop funding by proxy a private enterprise that competes wholly with the guarantee of government. We need to sell the pavilions, and I'd appreciate if you take this seriously, look into it, do the numbers. There's no reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, come on up.
Hello, my name is Pat Salathio, 4888 Five Mile Road, Williamsburg, Michigan. First of all, I too want to thank you. I've served on a planning commission. I know the terrible decisions you have to make, and I really do thank you for serving our community. As a native of Traverse City, I really do care, I actually grew up here, I really do care about all the properties that are on the for-sale block. But what I'd like to do is just talk briefly about Whitewater and about the Civic Center. And as far as Whitewater goes, I can't imagine not taking the Conservancy up on their offer to purchase this property. We know the Conservancy's record, we know that they're going to do the right thing, we know that they're going to pay for it. It's a win-win for both parties, but it's also a win for this community. I just can't imagine not considering that. Our public lands support a vibrant recreation economy as well as thousands of jobs in tourism in this area. I think we forget that, you know, it's off the tax roll, but what we get in return-
Right into the microphone.
But what we get in return is so much more meaningful. Regarding the Civic Center, when I was a kid, my grandparents and parents took me to the fair to watch the harness racing, pet the animals, and sit under the majestic trees that were, well, to eat ice cream, quite frankly. But the property was then repurposed a few years back, and we have what's there today. And I guess my point is that this land, as our community grows, this land will probably be repurposed again for things that we can't even envision yet. And it just seems so short-sighted to take this property in the middle of our city when off the public rolls for private enterprise. If you Google the economic value of a city park system, you'll see that it would be very short-sighted to sell this property. You know, we don't know for sure what's coming down the road. It could be the setting for an arts and cultural center. It's too early to get rid of it. Public lands exist for the good of all, not for the profit of a few. Please, please do not take these two properties off the roll. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? First, okay, have someone?
I'm sorry. Amelia Hasenorl, 207 North Cedar Street, Traverse City. I urge you, on behalf of probably the majority of the people waving the green cards in here, we all came down because we are very much using and loving that area, 160 acres in the Whitewater Township. It's used by bikers, hikers, fishermen, mushroomers, you name it. We use this many, many times a week. We love it. It is part of the Calcasca to Traverse City bike route. It is part of the Iceman pathway, seriously right in the middle of that racecourse. And there are other trails out there that we frequently use and we love. Preserving this land is so important to this community. If you think about the revenue brought in by the events, the race events and the hiking and running events that take place coming across this land, if you've ever been in downtown during Iceman Weekend, you can appreciate the, you know, 5,000 riders and their families and kids that come out to do this. This has been going on for years and years and years. This is important land right in the middle of the areas that we frequently use. I urge you to accept the Grand Travers Regional Land Conservancy offer, whether it's the best or not. I know that they offered, what I heard was 10% above a reasonable bid. I so support them, and they preserve this land not only for us, for our children, our grandchildren. If you sell this off, it will be a resource lost to us forever. It is not going to come back to the public if a private owner buys this. So I'm very emphatic, I very much love this land, I think many of the people here do. Please consider that bid as your best. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? They said there will be a chance, when we talk about this as part of the agenda, there will be another chance.
I'll take my chance.
That's fine. Fine.
Hi, my name is Tom White. I live at 124 East 14th. There's been a lot of good things said already, I won't rehash the WHO hash, but one thing I'd like to point out is it's been suggested to you to make those hard decisions. Well, let me tell you, selling land, selling stuff is not the hard decision. The hard decision is standing behind what you believe, what you believe in, what we believe in. If anyone can hold up their green card, if they either moved here or stayed here for the recreation, that's where all these people came from and why they're here. There's not a direct economic number you can point to and say, well, there, I'm going to put that into the pension deficit. That's the hard decision you have to make. You have to say, I'm going for the value, the future value, the intrinsic value, all of the values that we have right now and in the future for all the generations. That's the hard decision. I want you to think about that and make the hard decision and make it right. We have an offer that's 85% there of the highest offer. That makes the hard decision halfway easier. Please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. See the green cards.
Hi, Dan Ellis, 7352 Angel Road, Williamsburg, Michigan. Just real quick, to go off what Tom said, I run operations for a company in Traverse City, and hiring and retaining young employees in this area is very difficult. But the younger employees and employees, my best employees, employees that I can retain are actually outdoorsmen. And while it is emotional, it's kind of an emotional-based decision to sell this property to the Land Conservancy, it is really bigger than that. It's a property that so many people have so many memories on, and my kids ride there, I ride there. My property that I live on is owned by the Land Conservancy, not owned, but protected by the Land Conservancy, across the street is, and that's why I'm here. I'm not from Traverse City, I'm from Tecumseh, Michigan. But I moved here because of an emotional-based decision to live in a city that is protected and beautiful and recreational. And you guys are doing a great job, you have a great city, so please, please, please don't sell this to a private, it's all to the Conservancy. You know, if anything, I'm sure, like someone else said, fundraising, whatever would take, but don't let it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't see any movement, so once, twice, is there someone back there making his way? No, okay, three. Okay, thank you. We will come back to public comment a couple different times. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I-
I would move to-
Go ahead.
I would like to request that Item 9B be moved up to come before the Special Orders of Business.
Did we have the Area Agency on Aging representative? He is, yours is short, correct?
Oh, you got five hours to cast.
It's five. Five.
Okay. Let's, if we can just switch A and B, nine, how about that? Do that. So we're going to switch A and B, we're going to talk about the sale of property before the pension liability, other actions. Any other changes? I have something to add. We need to add, under Commissioner Department Reports, we have another appointment to Community Mental Health, someone who's just re-upping their term. Their term is over and they would like to be reappointed. So that's reappointment of Nicole Miller to Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, that will be 13B. Any other changes to the agenda, Bob?
I guess I need to ask, is that just the normal procedures to just reappoint, or do you have to go through the whole process again?
We don't have to go through the whole process if she was willing, and we can talk about that when we come to it.
Okay, and under 14B, are we going to change that date from June 21st to June 13?
Yeah, let's change that to the 14th, and we'll talk about that when that comes.
Do you want to make it either the 14th or the 28th?
Well, let's just talk about animal control discussion, and we'll just leave it at that.
Give people a choice.
Yeah, we'll talk about it all when that comes, when we come to 14B. Anybody else have any changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'm chairman, I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, seconded by Commissioner Mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will move on with the new agenda. I think we're up to Consent Calendar, Bonnie, please.
The purpose of the Consent Calendar is to expedite goodness by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the Consent Calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the Consent Calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the Consent Calendar. A, receive and file. Number one, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency minutes of April 20th. Number two, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health minutes of April 20th. Number three, Traverse Area District Library Board minutes of April 20th. Number four, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission minutes of April 25th. Number five, Department of Health and Human Services minutes of April 28th. Number six, Grand Travers Community Collaborative Minutes of May 25th. Number seven, letter of May 9th from Dawn McLaughlin regarding DHHS Board. B, approvals. Number one, renewal of agreement for Google Apps and Vault. Number two, excuse me, number two, foreclosure fund, access proceeds and treasurer annual report. Number three, Commission on Aging, nope.
Nope. Wrong, COA. COA, dispatch, what does that stand for? Central?
Command Officers Association.
Oh, Command Officers Association of Michigan Dispatch Supervisory Unit Collective Bargaining Agreement. Okay. Are there any commissioners who would like anything removed from the Consent Calendar to be further discussed?
B2.
B to the foreclosure fund?
Correct.
Anyone else? Anybody from administration? Anybody in the audience wants something removed from the Consent Calendar and discussed further? Okay, do I have a motion? Anybody?
I'll motion. Support.
Moved by-
I'll second. Yeah. Motion and a second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Lathrop, to approve the Consent Calendar with the exception of B2. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move on to, make a note of that, Special Orders of Business. We have a report on the Area Agency on Aging by Bob Schluter? Schluter, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me back again. I've been doing this short report for a number of years. When I got here tonight, I thought, finally, the word got out.
You picked a heck of a night.
My wife said, it's not all about you, Bob. I'll make this short, you've got a lot of work going on tonight. A lot of good comments being made. We are the, I work for the Area Agency on Aging of Northwest Michigan. We are a 10-county private nonprofit. We cover all the counties in Northwest Michigan, which happens to be the fastest aging section of the state of Michigan at this point in time. What I want to do, so that you get the meat and potatoes, if you turn into that, into your report there, you'll see last year, in 2016, we spent just under $2,600,000 in services for Grand Travers County. Now, the bulk of those services were helping people stay at home, and that is the biggest effort that we are involved in right now and involving more and more every year, is helping people stay at home as long as possible, and then moving to the next step, which could possibly be the pavilions, which is a wonderful facility, and actually Cory sits on our Board of Directors, and he has a nice steady hand on the tiller because we have a lot of stuff going on. But we work closely with our nursing homes, the Commission on Aging's in all 10 counties. We actually, in 1974, helped form, worked with all the counties to form their commissions and councils on aging. So we have very close partnership relationships with all of those organizations. The second page on that handout, you'll see the dollar amount that flows through your specific council on aging. You'll see that's just under $37,000. Your Commission on Aging does a lot of work on their own. We work, our staff works with them, they identify shared clients, and we work closely on making service at client with our joint dollars. Counties have different relationships as far as how many, Jennifer, how many dollars flow through their specific budget. Some counties identify more shared clients. Grand Travers has always been at a little lower amount, not because you serve less, but because you do more yourself. So that's something, that's the only difference there. You'll see on the big spreadsheet, there's a ledger on the left that talks about the actual programs that we serve in Grand Travers County. I do, there are two, I want to point out, two handouts there. One is a brochure. Once a year, we have a Senior Empower Day. For the second year in a row, we're having it at the Casino in Manistee. We'd like you to consider coming or sending somebody there. It's all about seniors, it's all about what's going on in their life, and then next year, we're working with a couple of other organizations. The casinos seem to be the most popular because it has a big draw, and I think there's a lot of hope for additional winnings when they go there. Casinos are working closely with us to welcome this great group. I'll take any questions and get out of your hair, because I mean, it's a big subject, but I know you have a lot going on.
I have a question.
What's the geographic area that you cover?
Well, it's the 10 counties of Northwest Michigan. We're very fortunate in Michigan to use this, so it's from the bridge down to Manistee.
Is it the same as Networks Northwest, 10 counties? Okay. Okay. The old council of governments order?
Same 10 counties.
Like the council of governments order?
Yeah, same county.
Cheryl. I'm curious, with our Commission on Aging, why do we need you? Not to put too fine a point on it, but-
No, that's a very good question, I'm asked that a lot. What happened back in '74 is that the aging, the difficulties of administering aging programs moved from activities to more medically-based services, and more services-
Bob, can we talk right in the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And services that needed more licensers and that type of skill set. So we actually worked very closely with the Commission on Aging. We have a lot of nurses, social workers, nutritionists that work closely with your county people. The aging, taking care of older people and the disabled community has become heavily medicalized in a lot of ways. And we just, it's just a big job. And the state actually listened to the county commissions back then, that threw up their hands and said, we can't do this anymore, it's too complicated, it's too expensive. And that's when they regionalized, there's 16 area agencies on aging in the state of Michigan. Detroit really is one by itself, the UP is all one by itself.
Okay, so Bob, what I'd really like for you to do for us for a future presentation, maybe not even a year from now, would be a Venn diagram that would show where your services and the services of the COA meet or diverge? Because I'm still not understanding from your response why we have two separate agencies. Okay?
Okay, sure.
You know Venn diagrams, circles.
Sure, and you know, feel free to call me, and I can sit with you privately, too, and go over stuff.
No, I don't want to do that. I want you to come to a public meeting, and I want you to share with us kind of what, why we have multiple agencies providing the same services.
Well, again, they're not providing the same services. Our biggest program is an $18 million Medicaid waiver program, which is, it would not, the amount of technical expertise to run that program, which all your counties share in, is massive. And so it is, there are, there's a technology side to what we do that would be hard to expect the county to pay for, but yeah, that's a good question.
Okay, I'm anxious to see it.
You bet.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Bob? Thank you very much. Move on to the items removed from the consent calendar. We have B2, foreclosure fund. Cheryl?
I just had a comment. I found this really helpful. I mean, I didn't know about this, I mean, I've only been on the board for five and a half months, but I found it really enlightening, and I think a lot of people would be surprised to read about this and to understand, you know, what goes into this. It was just very well done, and I just wanted to thank you for the educational piece, and you know, if it's not on our website, I think it should be on our website, because I think a lot of people would be really interested in reading this report, so.
Thank you, it is actually, we put it up every year on our webpage, on the treasurer's page.
I just don't think anybody goes to our website, though, that's part of the problem. We don't have a really great website, so.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on that? Do we have a motion to accept that?
Some.
Support.
I'll just pick one. Moved by Commissioner Gorfallette, supported by Commissioner Wheelock, to accept the foreclosure fund and treasurer annual report. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is accepted. Moving on. We're going to move to 9B now, sale of property of the 160 acres of Whitewater Township. Who is going to take this? We have a presentation at all?
We have a, the listing broker is here tonight to share with the board the offers that have been presented.
Okay, and you are?
My name is Ben Street. I work for the street team at Cobble Banker.
Okay.
Let me make a little room here, I got a lot of paperwork.
Okay.
So everybody does have copies of everything that was sold, was emailed to all of you? The offers themselves?
We have one piece of paper that has the offers on it.
Okay, you have the detail sheet there. So basically, what we'll do is we'll run through, now, the number of the offers just pertains to the order in which we received them, has nothing to do with monetary value or anything of that sort. So we'll go through, and we'll start on the first offer. The particular party that this offer pertains to, the buyer's name, last name is Thompson. It is a cash offer of $255,000. Like I said, it is cash. It is to be closed on or before June 5th, 2017. They are not asking for any gas, oil, or mineral rights to be included in the sale. They are putting $2,000 in earnest as a good faith deposit to be held by Cobble Banker Schmidt. They are asking for 10 days for inspections, to do their various inspections that they'd like to complete prior to that contingency being lifted. They are asking as additional conditions on this offer for the seller to provide a satisfactory survey with all the four corners marked on that property. So that is the details on that particular offer, number one.
Can I, can we ask questions as we go? Yeah, okay, and so I know it's something that's missing on all four of these, is do we have any information as to what offer number one plans to do with the property?
We have no knowledge as to what they're particular. We do have on one, actually, one second here, let me look and see if this is the particular-
It says option to Grand Traverse Regional-
Yes, this particular, on the addendum that is included, this purchaser wants to give the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy the option to buy the southern portion of the 160 acres divided by the Sand Lakes Road line there. Buyer wants to retain the land to the north of Sand Lakes Road. Purchaser to give the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy the option to buy the southern said portion of the acreage divided by the land, the Sand Lakes Road, at a rate of $1,594 per acre.
And do you know how many acres that is?
Off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on that one? We will move on to offer two. The buyer on this particular offer, his last name is Joseph, or his full name is Joseph Williams. He is going to be offering a cash offer of $352,000. That is cash. The closing is to take place on or before June 30th, 2017, and he is not asking for any gas, oil, or mineral rights to be conveyed on the sale. He is putting $25,000 in earnest to be held by Great Lakes Land Conservancy? Excuse me. Great Lakes Land Company?
Mm-hmm.
He is not asking for any inspections? And there are no additional conditions with this offer?
So same question?
Yep, absolutely. We do not know what he has planned for this particular property.
Okay.
But do you know anything about him?
No, very little. Nope, he's not our client, and we just received this offer. So they kind of keep their plans anonymous.
And do you know, as the listing agent, what this land is zoned for?
I'm actually not the listing agent, I'm just representing Mike Street, he was unable to be here tonight.
You know what the land is zoned for?
It's zoned recreation. It's zoned recreation by Whitewater Township.
So it's going to have to be recreation, no matter what budget.
Unless they rezone it. They have the, Whitewater Township would have the option to rezone it.
Mm-hmm, I knew that there was some ins and outs going on there that I'm not aware of, but.
Yes.
What was the appraisal value of this property?
$239.
$239?
I guess I'm just curious as to why someone would come in with this high of an offer.
Yes, Tom?
It's $239,000 was the appraised value.
And $250 was what we asked.
Don't look at your horse in the mouth.
So do you know the answer to the question of why someone would offer $125,000 more than it appraised for?
You would have to ask them, I would have no idea.
Okay, okay.
I can tell you, from equalization, when they provided this workup for us here, they had it listed at $1,088,000.
As the taxable value?
As the property value. So that was from equalization.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Offer number three?
Offer number three, the potential buyer would be the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy. They're offering $255,000 cash. They would want to close on or before June 30th, 2017. They are not asking for the oil, gas, and mineral rights to be conveyed at close. They would be putting $25,000 in earnest to be held by Cobble Banker Schmidt. They're asking for 14 days to complete inspections. And they do have a bunch of letters of support. Those were given to you folks, you could read through those, I'm aware?
I have about 500 of them.
Yeah.
All right, well, I only have four.
Sorry, 462, sorry.
Lots of green cards.
Last night, we still running.
Read them all, read them all.
So did I.
Yep.
Any particular questions on that one?
I have a question.
Oh, you do?
Is it the interest of Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy to someday sell the property to the DNR?
That is not something that they've made aware to us. Actually, you know what, I do think they have had some, that is one of the letters of approval that they do have was from the DNR. And I do believe they have had some talks, but to be aware of a particular arrangement, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, then I don't know the answer to this one, but it's worth checking out. If we sell to Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy at any price, and then they sell it to the DNR, and they find out that the property is actually worth more when they sell it, is it possible that we would get the difference?
Um, I-
Seriously, yeah.
You know, anything can be negotiated in a deal, absolutely.
Tom, did you have a comment?
I would just add that the DNR does pay taxes on property, and I believe, though not in the agreement, the Conservancy would be willing to pay property taxes prior to it being turned over to the DNR. So that wasn't in the agreement, but if there was an interest in accepting that, I'm sure you could make a counter offer with that as a contingency, that they would pay taxes in the interim until it's turned over to the DNR. My understanding is that the DNR doesn't move very quickly at times, and in real estate deals, that can be a hindrance to getting a deal closed. So I think the Conservancy is acting on behalf of the DNR, which wants this property because they can move quickly by making a bona fide offer quicker.
Dan?
Can you check out the answer to that?
Absolutely, well done.
Dan?
I want to make sure I heard that right. You're saying the Conservancy might be willing to pay the property taxes until DNR buys it?
I certainly can't speak for them, but I believe that a realistic counter offer, you would put it in the counter offer if that was intent to take this, and there was concern about the property taxes, you could counter for the same price and just say contingent upon them paying the property taxes until it's turned over to the DNR, which pays the taxes as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Move on to option, offer four?
Yep, offer number four. The potential buyers of this offer are the Tom and Linda Cosgrove. They're offering $261,000 cash. They are not asking for the gas, oil, and mineral rights to be conveyed at close. They are putting $5,000 in earnest, and that will be collected three days after acceptance of offer. They are asking for 10 days for inspections.
Okay, I'll correct. May I make a quick correction? It's 266, not 261.
Excuse me, 266. Excuse me, yep, you're absolutely correct there. I was not looking at the addendum that they had placed in earlier, later. They did attach an addendum to this particular offer. One thing that they have included is that they want to make sure that the, it is, they do have an intended use here. The intended use is to keep the natural beauty of the land with no development, so they do not plan to develop the property. And they're also saying that the county warrants that the property description will be to the buyer's satisfaction, and it's contingent upon pre-title review. So it's making sure that that tax description and legal description is what they actually think they're purchasing.
Okay. Any questions on offer four?
I have a general question.
Yes?
Do you have any other interests that they haven't made in offer yet?
I know that we have, I can't even tell you how many people I've talked to about this property.
Did Whitewater Township have any interest?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I spoke to them.
But I mean, I get calls daily.
Wasn't the deadline Monday?
At 5:00.
Five o'clock to receive, so.
Monday was the day. I know that our assistant, Kristi, came in and talked with a few of you, and we actually received an additional offer, so we asked for highest and best at that point, and that's what we have here today.
Okay. Yes, Cheryl?
So did one of them come in after Monday?
Yes, one, let's see here. We received the offer from Joseph Williams. Let's see here, the original offer was received on May 22nd, and he revised his, let's see, I believe it is, yes, on June 1st, I believe is the one that came in.
Was that Monday?
No. The 5th was Monday.
Thursday.
Okay.
3rd was Monday, I mean.
Cheryl, did you have a question?
I did have a question, not for the real estate person. Chris, there was a statement made by Mr. Roth that there may be title issues with this property. I've seen your opinion, have you altered your opinion based on Mr. Roth's comments?
No, based on the information that was provided to me, I did not find any restrictions in the deed, I didn't find that property was publicly dedicated. I'm unaware of any grants that would restrict the sale of property. The issue that was brought up with the solid waste management plan, that's interesting, and I can certainly review that further if need be, but it sounds like the worst-case scenario with that would be is we would have to then amend our plan to the satisfaction of DEQ.
That's already been taken care of, Chris, with multiple amendments to the solid waste plan since the plan that was produced in the late 1990s. I'll speak to that in a minute if you want.
And so just so that I'm clear, I mean, this isn't even a park, this isn't park land, this is land held by the county.
Correct. And if there are agreements out there for users, I mean, certainly whoever the buyers could either take the land, subject to those agreements, or if they're just licenses and they're not easements, they don't run with the land, they can be terminated.
Thank you. Bob?
Do we know, I mean, you know, some of the trails and whatnot, is there any easements that go with that, or is it just written agreements, or has that been researched?
Again, based on the information I reviewed, I did not find any easements existing on that property. So if there are no easements, then they don't run with the land, and they should be able to be terminated.
Ron?
There is a road that runs through it, through that land, isn't there? Which, is that an easement?
Sand Lakes Road.
Sand Lakes Road, that runs through it.
That, off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay, but I just would imagine that that must be a road that hikers could use.
Right, I mean, if it's a road, then it's publicly dedicated, and then-
So any of the trails could hit that road and get across that 160 and move from there.
I don't know if it all lines up, he might know.
Do we have any of, thank you very much. Do we have any of the sellers, or the sellers, for the seller, any of the buyers available through the grant, the Land Conservancy? Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I have also a big DNR-
Okay, okay. Okay.
Did you want those?
Thank you. My name's Glenn Chow, and I'm the Executive Director of the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy. I live at 2877 Old Mission Road. I'm delighted to be here, and I appreciate all the support in the audience, in the room and outside of the room. We've been getting all those letters, too, and it's very heartening. I want to say that we've enjoyed a very good working relationship with this county for well over two decades, and together, we've accomplished some great things. And I just want to ask you to support our offer, purchase what is incredibly significant 160-acre parcel in Whitewater Township. The Conservancy has the expertise to manage this with the intent of facilitating the transfer to our partner, the state of Michigan. By acquiring this parcel, until the DNR is able to take title, we would consolidate the public ownership in this area while maintaining critical recreational corridors and access. If you look at the screen, you see the location, the green is state-owned land, publicly-owned land. It's right in the middle of an important 20,000-acre block. And we feel that this would provide opportunities to expand recreational access in the future. Our offer is solid. It exceeds your asking price by 5,000, your appraisal by 16,000. So our board really stretched to make this work. We're cognizant of this pension challenge and what you're up against. We're also willing to close by the end of the month. We put $25,000 down, so you know we're serious, we're deadly serious about this. This is one of our top priorities. And we can get it done in a timely way and get those dollars in your hands. We've heard about the trail corridors. Next slide, Ted. But I want to show you them, because sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. You see the TC to Calcasca corridor? That's shown on your screen in orange. It vitally connects two important communities, our community and Calcasca, and all of these lands in between. You see the Iceman Cometh Race Route? This race brings over $2 million annually into our region in direct spending in November. Kind of tough to bring in dollars to our hotels and businesses in November and in some of the rural parts of our county that really need that injection of economic value. Mud Sweat and Beers, that's the primary fundraiser for Mount Holiday, a ski area that brings young families and teaches them how to ski. And that is not an area that is managed by public dollars, it's managed by the private sector. The VASA, the study that shows millions of dollars in February. Again, another shoulder season month, bringing valuable dollars into our region, into this county. So we know that... I want to read... I actually want to read your vision statement. "Preserving the beautiful and healthy environment, making Grand Traverse County a desirable community in which to live, and collaborating with other units of government for the benefit of the community are key components of the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners' vision statement. This is a win-win outcome for both the county and the broader community who are represented here. It allows for positive economic growth in the future and enhancing our special quality of life that we all enjoy so much." So thank you for allowing me to be here.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Tom, and then Dan.
Are you going to change it at all, the property? What would you have planned, anything?
No. Our plan is to hold it for the DNR, and we will pay taxes during our period of ownership. And Dave can address the DNR's... What they would plan to do in terms of tax... Property taxes, PILT, as they call it, payment in lieu of taxes.
Dan?
So I want to make sure, when DNR buys it, if they do, they pay taxes on it?
Yeah, Dave will address that.
Okay.
You'll hear it from the horse's mouth, Dan, so to speak.
We call him Mr. Ed.
I don't want to speak for the DNR. We have a great partnership, but he's authorized to address that question directly.
Ron?
If my information's correct, that area for non-homestead pays 43 mils.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Ron. Right into the microphone, please.
That pays 43 mils for non-homestead out in that area. That would be for offer number one, that would be $10,340 a year in taxes. Offer number two would be $1,000... $14,293 in taxes. And offer number four would be $10,790 in taxes. What is the PILT that the state would pay on that 160 acres?
Okay, I'll jump right in.
Name, please?
Dave Lemine, Unit Manager, the Traverse City Management Unit, Michigan Department of Natural Resources. To answer your question, Mr. Vice Chair, the state of Michigan will pay full property tax minus the statewide education tax millage, which is six millage. So the state is required to pay full property tax on any new acquisitions.
With all millages that...
That's correct.
Okay. What is the state... What is the state?
The statewide education tax is six mils.
Okay.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Did you have anything that you wanted to add from the DNR?
You know, Glenn obviously did a fabulous job, as he always does, tough act to follow. But you know, this is in the heart of state ownership. We have identified this parcel for a long time to be critical to the state of Michigan, to the public, as this offers quite a bit of recreation opportunity. There's already trails in place, although they're not official designated trails. But I believe the TART organization may have written agreement with the county or the Grand Traverse Hiking Club. I should step back and correct myself. But I believe the Grand Traverse Hiking Club has a written agreement with the county to have the Calcasca to Traverse City Trail go through this property. Snowboard Trail, which connects Traverse City to Calcasca, those two communities together runs on the east side of this boundary, the east boundary of this parcel. And we've already mentioned the Iceman Cometh Event Route, which is the largest mountain bike race in the nation, if I'm not misspoken. So that event route cuts through the property as well. Not to mention, if you look up at the map, Bullhead Lake, which is on the northern part of this parcel, the main access to this lake is through the county's parcel. So if this was sold to private individual, that the access to that lake, which is entirely on state land, would be in jeopardy. So you know, the main value that we view on this parcel is recreation. If this was to come to state ownership, that would be the main management objective for this parcel, would be to protect the integrity of the recreation component that is currently on this parcel, as well as any potential recreation experiences that this parcel could provide in the future.
Question.
Okay, Ron, and then Bob?
So if the... If this parcel was sold to the highest bidder, which is privately owned, would the state have any problem with them trails being rerouted? Or using the Sand Lakes Road as a trail to continue all this activity?
No, there wouldn't be... Well, there'd be a lot of work that'd have to be done, obviously. Additional review of the surrounding area, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we don't have any sensitive areas that are adjacent to this parcel, any threatened endangered species, that kind of thing, just to see if that's feasible.
What's the likely of endangered species out there? I mean, that's 20,000 acres of state forest.
Well, without looking, I really don't want to answer that question. Because the likelihood, it does exist. You know, what the percentage is, I don't know and don't really want to offer a guess on that.
I just want to add, Ron, that one of the reasons these trails are on this property is the topography and the features make it ideal for those trail routes. So it's not a simple thing to reroute trail. Some of the areas to the north are sensitive, there's a lot more topography. It would be a very expensive undertaking. And you know, running it along the road is not the same experience. And it doesn't make this the unique trail system that it truly is. So the quality would be diminished. And that is part of our brand in this region, that we're working so hard, these groups, to protect, that we not only have the best trails to maintain them well, and they're located and designed in the most optimal fashion. So this property is more important than I think we can possibly understand. We talk a lot about price. We focus on that price number. But as Americans, and where Americans are good at focusing on price, but we also got to look at value. And our offer has a very strong price, but it brings immense value that is hard to quantify, but it is very significant, so.
Bob?
Well, I really have a question as much as I was going to...
Do you have comments? Go ahead.
Well, I guess for the life of me, I can't understand why we would want to sell something right in the middle of state land to a developer to let them start doing something.
Look at the green cards for Bob.
I know we're such a financial hole right now, but you know, the $97,000, if that breaks us, we're in a lot more trouble than we think. I guess, as someone that enjoys outdoors, too, I don't see any value of selling it to anyone but the Conservancy, so.
I like the green cards, but we're not going to clap, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Cheryl?
I would move that we accept offer number three with the addendum that we put in writing that they will cover the taxes pending the DNR purchase, so that it's not just a gentleman's agreement, but it's actually part of the agreement. That was my motion.
I will support.
Okay. Motioned by Commissioner Gorfallette and supported by Commissioner Wheelock. Further discussion?
Well, a friendly amendment, that somebody does look into the fact that if the property sells to the DNR for more, that we would be eligible to receive the difference.
Can I... Before we do that addendum, can I ask the gentleman near the podium, would the intention ever be to sell it to the DNR for more? Or would it be the intention to sell it to the DNR for what you paid? Plus the taxes that you paid while you had it?
I think the DNR...
Yeah, you have to do it at the microphone, so everybody at home can hear you.
I have a loud voice, so...
That's okay. They need to hear you at home.
Big family.
Thank you.
And my staff knows all about my loud voice, so. The DNR is bound to pay appraised value at the time of the sale. So maybe it's in two years, whatever. The Conservancy isn't here to make money on this deal. So if there's a... You know, our legal counsel is here. If there's a way to do this in a legally proper way and structure it into an agreement, I would have to defer to our counsel, but we are not here to make money, so.
So if I understand you, if there's money made, you're happy to share it with your benefactors who are giving it to you at, you know, less than what we could get for it from another offer?
Yeah, we're looking to... Yeah, we have holding costs. It costs money to borrow money, because we're having to borrow money. But the nice thing is, a lot of the trail groups have offered to help fundraise to cover those costs, so.
It feels to me like a good faith offer, and I don't get the sense that anybody's looking to make... I mean, if this thing was worth a million dollars, Ron, and we listed it for $250,000, somebody's in trouble.
So to answer Tom's question, you're not willing to do a friendly amendment?
I'm not.
Okay, got it.
Well, I was just going to add that, I mean, yeah, they're not in the business to make money. They're trying to preserve this. I think if anything, if they do make something over... Won't be much. This property's not going to increase in value that much in the time it'll take. And if you do make some extra, just throw it into the trails, you know? I mean, into the development of making that. Again, it's going to be a couple thousand, again, that I don't think will hurt us one way or the other, so.
Tom?
Just additional information, the DNR already does have the mineral rights to this property.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, Sonny?
Well, I know nobody wants a history lesson, but they're probably going to get just a little one anyway.
No, we love history lessons from you.
How did Grand Traverse County end up with this piece of property in the first place? And the fact is, in the late 1990s, in the early 2000s, the state came through and they required all the counties to do a landfill assessment of what your capacity was. Grand Traverse County did not have a landfill sited within Grand Traverse County. At that point, the capacity at Glenn's landfill was projected only to take us to like 2015. And basically, the county made the decision that they needed to site, at least cite land for the potential placement of a landfill within Grand Traverse County. We purchased this piece of property. We purchased it from the DNR. And that's why the DNR continues to hold the mineral rights. We purchased this piece of property. There was an expansion to Glenn's landfill. Recycling came along, you know, and all those kind of things. And probably in the mid-2000s, a new assessment was done that projected we had landfill capacity to take us 100 years, you know? So we felt that we didn't need that property. We took pressure from Whitewater Township and environmental groups to the board pass the resolution that they would not cite a landfill on this property. At the time that decision was made, that we passed the resolution to not cite a landfill on the property, the discussion was made, well, then should we sell it back to the DNR? Never entered into any sort of negotiations at that time. But the discussion was made at that point whether or not there was value for the county to continue to retain this property. It doesn't cost us anything, you know? We aren't paying any maintenance cost or anything else. But now that we get to a point down the road that we don't need it for a landfill, we've passed a resolution that we are not going to build a landfill there, for God's sakes, it's in the middle of the Pier Marquette Forest. Why would we do anything with it other than to make sure to preserve it as part of that forest? And I certainly commend the Land Conservancy for stepping up and making this offer. I've had many opportunities over the years that I've sat to work with the Land Conservancy, with what they've done with some property within our community and with our region, and I can't imagine a better steward for this property.
Dan?
I'm looking at it a little differently. One thing, I see all these green cards, and so many times when there's groups here, they handle it in such a classless way. And this shows the kind of people that want to use this property and the kind of souls and minds they have. A little green card, you're making a statement, but it's not rude or excessive. I dig that. The other thing is...
Those other groups are going to be mad at you, though.
Well, yeah, and they'll tell me, too, with the boos and stuff. But I look... I think about when the pool people show up. They're... No offense, but you know, they look in shape. They look vibrant. They look happy. They look healthy. And this group looks just like them. So if that piece of land will help us do that to ourselves, I'm kind of for it.
They ride their bikes in the winter.
Yeah, yeah.
Holy cow.
I think I'm going to start showing up out there. Another thing I like is that...
My experience around last winter wasn't good.
Another thing I like is that DNR is going to pay taxes. And you know, we have so much land that we're not paying taxes. much land that we're not paying taxes on, so that makes it a little more palatable for me.
The DNR is paying on the state land already, the DNR is paying taxes.
Yeah, but they'll pay taxes on this new piece, right?
Yes, yeah, the current state land, the majority of it, the state of Michigan, it's not the DNR, but it's the state of Michigan pays PIL, their payment in lieu of taxes, so that's at a reduced rate. But any new acquisition, you know, the state is obligated to pay the full property tax minus that statewide education village. A perfect example of that is the Stromboliis property that we worked, the exact, the same example, or same situation, we worked with the Land Conservancy to acquire that 160-acre parcel within Whitewater Township. It's on the map, right behind you, and it's in white, so that means it's on the tax roll, so that, you know, that's, proof is in the pudding on that one.
Tom, did you have another comment?
Yeah, Glenn, if I could make the motion again to sell it to you, I would, but somebody already did that. But to the DNR, are you going to allow mining on that property? Any extraction of oil or gas, or?
Well, that is part of the charge for the DNR. You know, the state of Michigan holds almost 4 million acres of land, the state legislature created the Department of Natural Resources to manage that land, so part of that is managing the minerals. That 160-acre parcel currently has a well site on it, up in the northwest corner, you know, so that has, you know, that's already been an existing practice on that parcel. You know, there is, I don't want to bore you folks, but there, you know, the DEQ has stipulations on how close new wells can be, you know, so I doubt highly that there'd be another well put on that parcel. But again, you know, the state has held the mineral rights all along, so, you know, that's, I'm sure, you know, I'm sure that property's already under mineral lease and if there's an active lease, the wells are already in place.
Because when you hold your auctions, you lease off property that the state owns that's managed by the DNR, so somebody could, somebody could have a lease there where there's no well.
Correct. If this parcel is not currently under mineral lease, a company could come in to nominate this parcel, so then it would go to public auction, and a company could then bid on it and then enter into a mineral lease with the state. You know, so, there is potential that a new well could be placed on this parcel, but I believe there, if it's not already, or if it's not an existing active well, there's an old well on this property already. So, you know, if it's old and not active, then that means to me that this was a, you know, not very productive site, and so the likelihood of a company coming in behind a failed drilling attempt is probably unlikely.
Well, my comment back to the Land Conservancy is, when you sell to the DNR, I don't know if there's anything you can say, but personally, I am opposed to mining on that property and I'm opposed to fracking. Thank you.
Ron, did you have another comment?
I did. Cheryl, at, when we were talking about the Keystone property, you made a comment that...
Can you get closer to your microphone?
Yeah, you do.
You made a comment that we owed it to the taxpayers to get as much as we could out of that piece of property. Here we've got $90,000 more we can get for the taxpayer and you're willing to walk away from it.
Totally different.
I can understand that, I can understand that. But who's, I've bought and sold land, I know that when I have realtor bring me an offer, I would take that highest offer. I've never had to ask them, well, I'm not going to take your highest offer, I'm going to take the third, the second best. Who's going to pay Mike Street the extra $5,000 that his commission would be on that? I mean, how are we going to find another realtor to even market any property for us? We're shooting ourselves in the back by being so disrespectful to our realtor. I mean, he's, that's the, I don't understand it. I don't understand it. That's, I'm embarrassed to even be up here having to say this. I mean, we ask for a realtor to give us information and to give us the best price he can, he brings it in, and we send him down the road.
Well, I think he's going to make $25,000, Ron, so I don't think I'd cry too long or too hard.
But he would have made an extra five.
Well, you know, I'm just saying that's...
Well, I understand that, but that's not, you know, you know business.
Sure, I do.
But it's, you know, I never would have thought we would have been turning down a high bid, but I can see where we're going to be headed with taking care of our pension. It's going to be, I don't know where we're headed, but it's not anywhere as profitable.
Okay.
Just one additional bit of information, in November of 1977, it was purchased for $60,000, that was the original price that the county paid for.
Sonny?
I think there's two pieces to look at this. This property, Ron, is owned by the citizens of Grand Traverse County.
That's right.
Okay? I believe that our responsibility is not strictly to look at the dollars, we are responsible to look if we're going to do something with county-owned property to make sure it's the best use for the community, and I believe this is a much better option for the community than selling it to a developer.
You're saying developer, this guy may be using it for hiking, you keep saying to a developer, we don't know.
Well, we don't know.
We have no idea. But one thing we do know is a proven fact that if we do it with the Land Conservancy and their partnership with the DNR, the property is preserved in the Pure Marquette Forest forever.
Sure. And one thing we probably know is that they'd be shopping for a different realtor to be marketing property for us.
Okay, so, I get to talk, and then we're going to open it up for public comment if anybody has any. I don't, it's not all about the money. We do need the money from the sale of this property, and that's why we put it out on the market, and that's why we contracted with a real estate agent to do that for us. It is heartening to know that we will get tax dollars from it, that those that have offered to buy it, the Land Conservancy has offered to pay taxes while they hold it, and then the DNR will pay taxes as well. The, I wrote a whole bunch of little notes here. The thought that we could, that the trails could or should be rerouted on a road, I ride lots of trails with my kids, we camp a lot and ride on a lot of trails, I don't like my kids on the road. I pick trails that aren't on the road. It's very, it's not fun to ride on the road, and that's not why we ride on the trails. We ride on the trails to see what's out there, to see the different kinds of terrain and things. I think that to sell it, this property, just to the highest bidder, is very short-sighted, and I think that the Land Conservancy and the DNR have longer sights on that, it is for the public good. And I also want to echo what Dan said about all the emails that we received, it was a little overwhelming, lots of them. I had to go, but I did go through every single one of them because I had to make sure that there wasn't something lost in there that I, you know, for some other purpose that I needed, so I did have to, I did go through all of those, and I will say that every single one of them was very respectful. Everyone was very heartfelt and sincere and very respectful. Sometimes we get emails and people aren't quite that way, but all of these were very respectful, and so I will say that. So, thank you, and thank you for your participation, for sending us the emails, I got a lot of calls today, thank you for the little green cards, and for everybody coming, I like to see this participation, this is awesome, this makes our decisions not easier, at least we know what the public thinks. So with that, I am going to, you can have one more comment, then I'm going to open it up to the public.
One more comment, Bing says, you did mention the emails.
Yes.
I did as well go through the emails.
Yes.
I did see emails that came from Ohio, Illinois.
Visitors.
I did see, so I took, I took 100 random names, checked them on a parcel viewer, and came up with seven property owners that were listed in Grand Traverse County. So, there were seven out of 100 that were actually, had skin in the game with Grand Traverse County. Probably more than that of the total, but that was my average, so.
Bob?
That should show you then what additional money's come in from using that, from people that are out of town, out of state, that come in and use that a lot, so.
That do have skin in the game.
Yeah, there was a lot, a lot more emails on any subject than we've got.
We've ever gotten, I've never gotten that many emails on anything, even the pool and everything else.
I think it does show that the use of it is important to the community and the people that come here in the summer and everything else, so.
Okay, I promised I would open it up for public comment, if anybody has any other public comment that they really feel very compelled.
Really, really, really.
Really, really compelled, and maybe something, if you have something that we haven't heard yet, let's go with that.
All right, that's a good idea.
Because I like the green cards, I agree.
I'll make it quick.
Thank you.
Matt McDonough, 205 West 10th Street, I'm here to ask the Board of Commissioners to sell the 160 to the conservancy. There's four points I'd like to make to support the request, but many of those points have been made. The benefits are very tangible, you know, you're maintaining public recreational opportunities, hunting, mushrooming, hiking, mountain biking, snowshoeing, access to Bullhead Lake, you're preserving wildlife habitat, all at no future cost to the county. Two, you're, by selling to a private buyer, you're risking creating incompatible land uses on adjacent properties, you know, with adjacent properties, because if that, if and when that gets developed, not only do, you know, if properties get developed, if buildings get built on the boundary or close to the boundary, you're taking land that's now open for hunting out of commission on the state land because of the 450-foot hunting, you know, safety zone. Sand Lakes Road is used regularly now by ORV traffic, as that property in the future gets developed, you know, if it got developed, that would inevitably create conflict with the ORV and snowmobiles along Sand Lakes Road, and of course, you're impacting the trails that are already on the property. Third thing, cost comparisons. It's easy to do the short-term cost comparison, $97,000, we know what that number is now. The longer-term cost comparison is much harder, if not impossible, to forecast. We know we're going to get PIL payments from the state, right, so that's a known, that's good, that's a known cost or income to forecast. If development, future needs and costs for those additional public services to structures and residents are less predictable, will the taxes generated from those properties offset the public services they will need, both today and 20 years from now? Study after study shows that public services needed for rural developments cost more than urban, it costs more to get them out there, longer lines, longer school bus routes, et cetera. One reason the county is considering the sales from poorly forecasted costs, so we just don't know if that tax revenue would actually help cover those costs, those services need. So, at the end of the day, will it really be worth it? I mean, it's my understanding you're looking at a $40 million pension deficit, and $97,000, that's, you know, that's less than 1%, and is that really worth that value that this property has to all the people in this room there, for all the reasons that were stated? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, my name is Gary Feria, I am the president of the Vasa Ski Club. We were formed 30 years ago, originally as the Grand Traverse Nordic Club, we changed our name to the Vasa Ski Club specifically because of that trail. It is known throughout the state of Michigan, throughout the country, and it is synonymous with cross-country skiing in this area. We have 300 members, many, many families are members of our club, and they are almost all in Grand Traverse County. We strongly favor the conservancy's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You already talked about this subject.
On this particular subject, except that, you still have a motion open on the floor right now. Mr. Mayor did make a motion, and if there was no second, you need, I think, believe that needs to be cleared.
What, for the friendly amendment?
He wanted a friendly amendment.
Yeah, it's a friendly amendment.
And Cheryl did not wish to make that friendly amendment.
Yeah, actually, you know, Jason, that's sort of a nod to you because it's not the highest offer, so if the state paid more, the county would get more money. If it takes two years for the transaction to take place...
Right.
There are some odds there that the selling price will be different, so.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, procedurally, our council says we're okay with Cheryl did not accept the friendly amendment that he made, he had not made a motion. He wanted her to make a friendly amendment.
Okay, so he wasn't moving to amend the motion?
He asked her to make a friendly amendment, and she did not wish to do so.
She politely declined.
Yeah, I think it was right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, though. Anybody else? You got something different? Because I told you one per person.
Let me, well, did I really speak too much about it the first time? Let me clarify for Commissioner Gore-Fallett. I'm not an attorney, the incumbent's word probably is wrong, written agreement, definitely the case, we have a written agreement with North Country Trails.
Yes, we do.
So, there are some things on that property, and one more history with Sonny's history, that piece of property was dropped in the park's lap and said, what can you guys do with it? Our former director, Jason, signed agreements that the board approved, so there is ties to park's recreation, and we are reluctant to get rid of it, but it looks like it may move forward the right way, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Paul Common, 2381 Carroll Road, Traverse City Peninsula Township. I'd just like to voice my support for the sale of the property to the Land Conservancy. I've been a resident of Grand Traverse County for 39 years. I did send an email, I have my Grand Traverse County taxpayer, and please do the right thing, and the difference in the price will be insignificant over the lifetime of this property, so please vote in favor of the conservancy, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to do the ones, twice, three times. Okay, we'll close public comment on this particular item and bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any further questions or comments before we actually go to a vote? We'll call vote please, Bonnie. Gore-Fallett?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
No.
Crawford?
Yes.
And the motion passes. So, yeah, the green cards, yeah, no clap. We are going to take a 10-minute break, okay, because that will allow everyone to leave who would like to leave, that's kind of why we ordered it the way we did. So, we are in recess for 10 minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Glenn.
That gives us the stability going forward. We also have for your, for your review and consideration, two options for trust. We were looking at irrevocable trusts in terms of where we put funds and you understand what Gatsby, we have to set up a healthcare trust fund and they have one in place and that would save us setting up a trust fund. And also, we were looking at irrevocable trust for the funds that would be outside the normal 5.9 million to build up additional reserves. The reason being for that is that we can't predict the volatility of the markets if there'll be a recession and so for us to maintain the stability of a 5.9 million payment, we needed to build extra funds and put them in such as you would be placing the land sale in for a reserve. So if a situation changed and we were asked to put another half a million in, we'd have a reserve trust to go to. The difference in this trust is that there are 13 investment options that we would be able to pick and choose, which would be different than being into the actual MERS program where they make the investments in a large group. Another precedent setting move is this was set up for people outside MERS who were not in MERS and they were willing to come back and revise that policy and let us into that program for our trust. We wouldn't have to set an irrevocable trust of our own then and it meets our need of wanting to have a little bit more control over some of the funds that we place in there and put it in possibly a lower discount rate of 5 to 6% compared to the 7.75. So those are the two issues that are before you tonight. They are probably two of the three legs on the stool to solve the pension problem. The other ones are yet to be determined, the millage and the bonding were issues. The other three that I would mention to you would be what you acted on tonight, which was selling some assets and putting those funds into legacy cost reduction. The second would be, we're looking at that of possibly selling some of the county buildings, leasing them back on a, say, a 20-year lease with the option to buy them back in 20 years to have some upfront cash come in soon. And the third that I would be remiss if I didn't mention is the organization must get its operating costs down. And so that would be part of the ongoing budgeting process and part of the ongoing management process to make sure that the structural costs are being lowered. Now, the last three that I mentioned, which would be the selling of some assets and the leasing of, selling of properties and leasing them back and the operational lowering of costs would get us out of the pension problem without any additional cost to taxpayers. It would say, "We're taking responsibility as an organization for the situation we're in and we are going to work out of it ourselves based through our own efforts." And that's what the charter was and that's what this plan does. The things you have before you tonight will deal with the first two critical issues, which is the amortization schedule and the setting up the trust with which to put the healthcare and the other additional funds in. Thank you.
Dan?
I make a motion that we accept this stabilization plan as written. I don't see any reason, if we do this, it doesn't mean we can't do other things. So I make that motion. Support.
Motion by Commissioner Lathrop, supported by Commissioner Klaus. Comments? Questions? Tom?
Okay. I agree with most of the stabilization plan, at least the beginning of it, but then I would like to split it and vote on one and two tonight and possibly three and wait on four, five, six, seven. Seven, just because I'm not agreeing to the whole plan. I could start from the, the last thing is, is that you're authorizing the board chairperson to follow through on all this and if I don't agree with that, of course, I would answer no to that. I am not sure that having MERS handle the investment of the money that we're setting aside to pay for the pension debt is the only idea that could be considered. I think there would be alternatives to having MERS do that because that is separate from MERS and the fund itself. And I've heard a fair share of criticism about the fund and I'm not here to criticize it. I would accept that they do what they say they're going to do and that the returns are 7.75, but you know, that's, on one hand it is and on another hand it might not be. So I don't want to give them more opportunity to make investments for us. I want to consider other alternatives on four and five regarding retiree healthcare. I believe that before we do that, we should offer a buyback to the retirees, cash out their healthcare account. I think that's reasonable. And then if you did that, you wouldn't want to agree to this necessarily right now until you went through the process of the buyback. Contributing 5.9 a million a year may be okay as long as you can change it because I'm still investigating the alternatives of millage, bonding, and the other smaller effect things that you can do, such as selling property. So if we agreed to 5.9 million per year, we might not actually have to give them that much per year theoretically if we did some other ways to build up, towards being funded instead of being as low as we are today. Money upfront, present value of money, future value, the more we pay upfront on our debt, the less expense and the more money that, you know, it favors us, just put it that way. Pay it upfront favors us. As far as the 5.6 million to send to the MERS as part of the extension agreement, I totally agree with that. In fact, it might be more, I'm not sure, if it's slightly more than that. Closer to 6 million, wouldn't be a problem for me. And then the agreement to extend the amortization schedule, I think we have consensus on that. Everybody agrees 12 and then move it up to 16 years. I took the initiative to contact the bank that the county banks with. I just thought it was very practical. It's something my dad would have done. My dad was treasurer of a very large construction company. The people that built additions on Monson, the Monson Cancer Center, lots of large projects locally. They did the wind farm in McBain. Anyways, you have a relationship with your bank, your bank has a relationship with you. I decided to take the initiative to contact the bank. They actually have at least one or two pretty profound experts on financing debt and pensions and things like that. So I started to get another look at it and actually found out that it was a little different than John Ax. Some of it's the same as John Ax, some of it's a little different than John Ax, but enlightened me to even more than I've learned in school and time spent in the library as I spent today. So I can discuss this more after, you know, you get a little reaction to that, but as far as one and two, total agreement, three through seven, I do not agree and I will make a case for that. And I'll give you part two after the discussion goes on. Thank you.
Anybody else? Cheryl. Cheryl presented us with a little.
Yeah, I, I gave, I've been.
Microphone.
Thank you. I've been thinking about this issue, as I'm sure all of you have, and you know, we've had multiple study sessions and as Bob has pointed out, we've studied this thing to death. And as a result of studying it to death, I sort of jotted down what I thought would be some things we could do right now to help resolve this issue, some things that would take a little more time and some things that would take even more time. And I totally agree that we should pay MERS the 5.6 million to buy the extra years. I think we should attempt to buy out the OPEB. If we can buy out $7 million, why would we not do that? That benefit is something that the state could take away with a stroke of a pen. It is not constitutionally mandated and for us to not try to buy it out, I think would be short sighted. So I think we should try and buy it out. If we can't buy it out, then I would suggest that we bond for that $7 million. Which leads me to my next suggestion, which is that we would also bond for our lowest funded divisions of our pension. And I've outlined those on this little sheet. A number of them are related to law enforcement, but you can look at that little sheet yourselves and you can see what the various divisions are. And my recommendation is that we fund them at 80%, which would be $16.9 million. If we did that, we wouldn't be under the danger of an emergency manager having to be appointed because we wouldn't be the lowest funded pension plan in the state, which currently we are. And I think that that's something that we realistically have to look at. I mean, an emergency manager stepping in would wreak havoc with the county. Additionally, by fully, by 80% funding and giving that infusion of cash, that would modify that payment that we have to make for MERS. We wouldn't have to pay that 5.9 million, okay? But we would put that money into a trust and my recommendation would be that we manage that trust like NMC manages its foundation, which is they have three different local investment firms that each get a portion of that money and they manage it and they report quarterly on how they did. And based on how they did, they either get to keep managing money or they get less money to manage or they get no money to manage. But it's purely a reward system based on how well they do in managing that money. And I would suggest that, you know, the OPEB, if it needs to be bonded, would be handled the same way. My other suggestion was to sell Sand Lakes, which we already did, so that checks that box off. As a midterm action, I'm recommending that we sell the Civic Center to the city. Everybody already thinks they own it, so let's let them. That can be their thing to deal with and get it off of our books. I read the contract that we have on this parcel of land that we're sitting in right now and the city does have about a 26% or 27% interest in this building, but there's a clause that says that we only have to give them 60 days notice that we no longer want to have a relationship and then they can buy it if they want at a price. Or alternatively and more intelligently, we sell it and this beautiful parking lot next door that's right on the Boardman River, we know across the river what's going to happen over there. I mean, that's right now in Brownfield to make a whole lot of money for development. This would probably sell for a pretty good, pretty good price. Sunny pointed out to me that the county seat has to be in the city of Traverse City, but the clerk's office is already in the courthouse, so I think that that would resolve that issue. So that wouldn't be a problem. I'm not aware of this study and I tried to get a copy of it from the Sheriff's Department, but apparently sometime in the last decade, there was a pretty extensive study that was done about the need for a law enforcement center because currently our law enforcement center is in an old bank building, Woodmere, and we need a new jail. So that's kind of a longer term plan, but I would think, sell this building, move our services out to Lafranier, which is why Lafranier, I think, was built in the first place, was to get services out there, get the law enforcement center and the jail complex online. And again, by managing our money and using the sale of these assets to, after seven years, you can pay off your bond, I mean, it'd be a seven-year call. Once we move the law enforcement center out to Lafranier, we can sell the Woodmere building, which is on a prime, you know, commercial corridor. So my point being that I want to see us adopt a plan that isn't just, oh, let's do the MERS 12 to 16 years. I mean, you could have done that last October. This is exactly the offer that you had on the table in October of 2016. How does that now solve the problem of the pension? It didn't solve it then, it's not going to solve it now. I mean, all it's going to do is stabilize it. It's not going to solve it, okay? So in order to solve it, I think we have to be more forward thinking and we have to have a multi-layered plan. And so I would like us to consider a longer range plan.
Bob?
I agree with most of what you said. You know my feelings on bonding.
I do.
I'm not going to go into that. We all know, we all know my feelings on bonding. So what I would offer to you is, you know, with the numbers you want to raise in the bonds, I mean, I would think worst case, if you've got the pavilions into play here, you could get that.
I'm not in favor of selling the pavilions.
We could look at it. I mean, everything's on the table. Personally, I would look at that before I would look at bonds, but again, we have a process here, you know, it could be in the minority. What I would say is, at least if you're going to bond, I agree with 80%. I think it does leverage or loosely lessen some of your hopefully potential liability down the road, so. I do agree, let's do something. I hate to say, "Let's do something," even if it's wrong, but I think at this point, we have beat this horse to death, you know? Animal Control wouldn't even come pick this thing up. So let's go and, if we have the Animal Control, right? Let's go and, let's just do something.
Tom?
I just want to make sure that people who work for the county understand where I'm coming from and I appreciate everything you've been doing. It's not about that at all. I just have a different opinion and I appreciate what the Pension Advisory Board did and I felt bad when the three people resigned, thought that was pretty premature. I appreciate that MERS comes here and gives us advice. I mean, I'm totally appreciative of all that. I just have a little bit different outlook on things. And here's an example. Here's a timeline, just to give you an idea where my mind goes. By August, at the rate we go, we might be able to decide that we would consider a bond. Well, the first roadblock to that would be the potential referendum, which gives the public an opportunity to decide whether they like that idea or not. And if that didn't enter into it, the timeline would mean that we could figure out the solution by the end of the year. This is a partial amount, not the full amount of the debt. I'd even accept less than 80% actually, but 60% is the mark that the state of Michigan might find the line in the sand, basically, at 60%. We're around 42, 45%, so we do have to do something. We have to bring some money in upfront, okay? So a lower amount, not the full bond for the full debt. Try to get it okayed and done by the end of this year so that it's all complete in this year's budget. It's not a bad idea. The earliest that you could put a millage out, if you did, would be in May and that's about 5/18, May 18. That would be like what Beta did and the reason that Beta did that is because that's the fewest number of voters that would appear at the polls and they'd have an advantage, okay? Because some people might have a conscience about that. So they'd say, "Maybe we should do it in August." And I bet you that's where people would land, in August, okay? So you would have a millage in August and somebody would have to tell me when the first dollars would come in, but it wouldn't be for a while. Meanwhile, look back at the end of this year, solving something that doesn't have anything to do with the millage, with a bond. By the end of 2018, if you really like to kick the can down the road, you're going to run up against a sunset on the Public Act 329 unless they extend it, which they have in the past. You would lose your opportunity to take advantage of the state law that says that you can bond for pension debt, which only was true as of October 9th of 2012. That's when that came into place. So they've changed the sunset on it more than once, as far as I understand. But you have to decide on a timeline like this, what you're going to do so that you can accomplish something within a certain amount of time. You have to set a goal. My goal would be to have something clearly stated and agreed on by everybody by the end of this year. Set it right now. I would commit to trying to solve the problem by the end of this year. I don't think that's out at all. The only thing that could delay that is if you went the bonding route and there were a referendum, that would delay it, so. But that's the public's opportunity to say something. That would be, you know, something like, you know, I'm not going to say Bob Johnson would do it, but Bob Johnson might say a referendum is the response to proposing a bond. It's a fact. That's what, that's what, that's what it's there for. So the public has an opportunity to control government and there's a check and balance, in other words. But I think setting a timeline like that, I think side-by-side comparisons, are we really going to save money by doing a millage? Are we going to save money by doing bonding? How are we actually going to save money on the bottom line? And I would guess, a hazard to guess, that if you looked at it and you had somebody, you know, help walk you through it, because we're not experts, you would find out, then, I don't know, 10, 20 years, you could save 10, 20 million dollars perhaps if you chose bonding. And it sounds wrong because you're paying out the interest, you have the fees for the bonds and all that, but actually, there's a whole bunch of other stuff that you're not paying that kind of balances it out a little bit. And I never see that. I don't see the side-by-side comparison when I'm here. And that's, maybe that's what we all need, is to see that and see it on a timeline. And there's interruptions. If the state of Michigan decides that they're going to send notices out to people who are funded too low, we don't even know if they're going to do that or not, but presume that they do, we don't want to be the only ones to get the note because we're the lowest performers. That's embarrassing. This is a lush place. Yeah, this is a lush place. Development in this town exceeds probably any other town in the state of Michigan and yet we have this problem, it doesn't line up. I'm willing to commit and I'm willing to try to set it straight, come up with something final on paper by the end of this year. I would hate to think that we're still kicking the can down the road in 2018. I would feel bad about that. Thank you.
Sunny, you haven't spoken yet. Did you have your hand up? Need a moment to collect your thoughts?
Yeah, well, you know, I absolutely agree with the, with the one-time payment to MERS and extending the amortization. I supported it a long time ago and we didn't do it then. We really need to do that. At that point, it was a 5.1 number, now it's a 5.6 number, really doesn't matter. The idea that you have a fixed payment makes it a lot easier for us to budget through, you know. I still, I still remember the graphs and scales that show that, you know, of course, you know, and my brain is still 2028, that we're making a $9 million payment, but in 2029, we're making a $1.1 million payment, in 2030, we're making a $400,000 payment. You know, we have to get through that hump. So how best do we do that? You know, no disrespect for anyone, but I still don't trust MERS. It's that simple. I'm not taking all of my put money and putting it in one basket. Whether, you know, there's no way that I'm getting, going to support having MERS deal with the OPEB. I can't do that. I like the idea of, you know, multiple people bidding on the investing our money. I really do, you know? I do that in my world. I talk to different investment people about how to handle, handle different money and what to invest in, what not to invest in. We have zero input with MERS and to be completely honest with you, in my opinion, their performance doesn't, doesn't give me any warm and fuzzy feeling, you know? They promised me a 7.75% return and they lose a half a percent, you know? It's, you know, that's, that's an 8.2 million or 8.2% swing, you know? They, in 2015, they not only cost me the projected 7.75% interest, but they cost me a half a million dollars of our own money that was already in their account. I, you know, it's, I've never been bashful. I don't, I don't like MERS, their performance. You know, I think they've come to the table in the last few months and really had discussion with us, which is great. You know, I think, you know, I'm all about the one-time payment to MERS and trying to get that payment down, fixing that payment at a better rate, you know? That was the reason, that was the reason I supported bonding two years ago, was to make that payment a more of a fixed rate. You know, the idea of being able to fund a portion, only deal with certain units, I hadn't thought about being able to do that. You know, I know that the Sheriff's Department is a huge part of our pension debt, you know? So maybe looking at just those units that are in the Sheriff's Department and taking that, instead of dealing with bonding 50 or 60 million dollars, we're dealing with bonding 17 million dollars. That's, that's, that's a huge difference to me, you know? And I believe, you know, we can, you know, we can stand here or sit here and be threatened by referendums about if you try to bond that we're going to get the referendum. You know, I'm pretty confident that if I put on the ballot side-by-side to the taxpayers, "Are you willing to allow Grand Curves County to sell bonds, which we will pay out of our general fund, or are you willing to pay money, additional money in your taxes in a millage?" I'm pretty sure if it's an either or, which one's going to win. You know, I'm just, I'm not prepared to support these options that are listed to deal with the OPEBs and that thing. I, I don't think we're prepared to do that, at least I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I'm more than willing to talk about the 12 to 16-year amortization, the one-time payment and trying to develop a fixed payment. You know, whether that fixed payment is 5.9 million dollars or 6 million dollars for the next 12 years, I don't, you know, I'm sure that we're going to be okay. But this idea of getting into allowing them to deal with the OPEBs and everything else, I'm putting way too many eggs in one basket for me to have a comfort level.
Ron?
I can envision if a bond is passed at the board, going to the voting booth and seeing a referendum there and right alongside of it, a millage wanting to be passed for the pensions. And neither one of them will fly at that point. Then we'll, we will have burned up that much time and we'll be sitting in the same spot at that time after the voters let us know that they've already paid their debt and we mismanaged it. We, you know, few passports and we have to deal with it. It's, it's going to, that was said tonight by Jason Gilman, that sell the pavilions and I, I stand by that. If we sold the pavilions, we would have the money to take care of that. And I'm sure that when we, the pavilion sells, that there's a unfunded liability there with those retirees that's going to have to be taken care of as well because they fall underneath of our, the county's umbrella. And just because the pavilions, the pavilions was to fold as the ownership that day and transferred to someone else, that probably wouldn't be picked up by new owners, but that's my feeling about it.
Tom?
Yeah, I just want to mention, historically, Manstein County sold a hospital. They weren't running it, but they sold it early this year, I think, and it brought in quite a bit of money. It wasn't like the pavilions, in other words. It was just a building, I believe. But, you know, we talk about selling and leasing this building back. I mean, we could sell the pavilions building and lease it back because I think the people here really want to continue the county running the pavilions as a health facility and I support that. And the only thing I would give up is maybe the ownership of the building as a possibility, but it has to be discussed. I would not like to sell the pavilions outright. I want to keep the pavilions. I think the community here supports that. Thank you.
Sunny?
We can go all around surrounding counties. All of them put general fund money into adult foster care facilities. You know, what, Benzie County just spent millions of dollars building a new facility that took them three years to get it approved to use. And they've put additional monies in time after time after time in order to get that facility licensed by the state. Grand Curves County has an absolutely beautiful facility, serves our community very, very well, and it doesn't cost this county board one dime of general fund money. That's very, very rare. The other thing you have to look about, and you know, Chris can probably speak to it better than I can, you can't sell the pavilions anyway because we don't own it. It belongs to the, to the building authority. And the building authority will retain ownership on it as long as there's outstanding bonds on that building. We can't sell it and I'm sure Chris will speak to that.
Yeah, we do, as you know, at the last meeting in June, we are going to update the board on the sale of the pavilions, Civic Center.
You got to talk in, yeah, sorry.
We will be updating the board on the issue of selling pavilions, but we continue to do research on this. John Sykes, myself and other county staff are looking into all these issues, but right now as it stands, Sunny is correct that the building... these issues, but, right now, as it stands, Sonny is correct, that the building authority does own pavilions. And that is because there is, my understanding, according to John Axe, is that there are outstanding bonds owed on that property. So the bonds would have to be paid before there's any conveyance from the building authority to the county.
Ron.
How about the vacant property at the pavilions? Is it just the building?
Again, we're still looking into this, but I believe the vacant property is also covered. Yes.
Also covered?
Yeah. So what happened was, in 95, I believe, bonds were issued by the building authority. Under the Building Authority Act, it says that the building authority has the authority to lease the property to a public body, in this case being the county, for up to 50 years, or until the bonds are paid off. So that lease exists. So the county is the lessie, building authority is the lesser. Up until the bonds are paid out, I believe it covers all the pavilions property, including the vacant parcel, the cottages, and there are bonds outstanding. So right now, this board is without authority to sell it. The other complicating issue, just so you're aware, is that pavilions is actually run by a separate board, it's the DHHS board. Under state law, and I just pulled it up, they have the authority to supervise and be responsible for the operation of a medical care facility. Pavilion is a medical care facility. So they supervise and be responsible for the operation of that. Again, that's something we're looking into. Does that mean ultimately, they have to have a say in selling the business? I would think yes. Whether we can do a sale of the land, a lease back, that's another issue. But nonetheless, we do have this law, that says the DHHS board is responsible for supervising pavilions.
Bob.
Yeah, I mean, that's a discussion for later on, about the pavilions. I will say, to tap into what Ron said, that if you think that, I mean, we do need to get a plan. I personally think tonight, let's just at least get the shell of a plan going. I think bonding, I think if you do vote to bond, I firmly believe they will get that on the ballot and vote that down. I think, I know they will vote down a millage. So if that's your plan, you need to have an alternative right now, to say, look, at the end of the year, when they vote everything down, now what are we going to do? I mean, my thought is, let's just extend the amortization, pay the 5.6 or 5.9, and then, you know, we've already, we're close to what we're paying now, anyway, from MERS. So, you know, we had an additional revenue, I guess, last year for, so, you know, we may not be quite as financially strapped in some of those areas, where we could buffer some of that. I do agree with the OPEB. I'm not as easy, either, to get that to MERS, and I think we have time to address that, I think, down the road, so. What I would suggest is for your motion to amend it to...
One, two, and three.
Yes, for right now.
I was going to suggest that, ask if you would do that.
Would you allow your motion to be amended to one, two, and three of the proposal?
Yes.
And then we'll talk about some other issues after we, let's at least do that.
You said he would amend that.
I'll do it.
And who is the second?
And I would support his amendment.
Who seconded?
You seconded, who seconded that?
I seconded it.
Are you okay with taking just one, two, and three right now?
Sure.
Sure. Okay. Jody.
I would just ask that number seven authorizes the board chair to effectuate those items, so there will need to be a signing party to those agreements.
That's all that number seven says.
I'll do it.
Seven is okay. Ron, seven is okay.
One, two, three, and seven?
Okay. Okay, so we have that now, we have it amended, so the motion on the floor is to accept, is to approve the amortization extension agreement with MERS to extend the county's amortization schedule from 12 to 16 years. Appropriate and authorize a one-time payment of 5.6 million dollars as negotiated in the agreement, from various funds that have been identified. Contribute level payments of a minimum of 5.9 million dollars pursuant to the agreement. Directing the difference between the actuarially determined minimum required contribution and the annual payment of 5.9 million to a surplus division within the pension plan, and authorize the board chair to sign all that.
Okay, and what is the surplus division within the pension plan?
Jody.
So, the option would have been to take, for instance, in the earlier years after the lump sum, we would anticipate that the annual valuation will report a minimum required contribution lower than the 5.9 million. So the difference, let's say, in the first year is 5 million, that difference of $900,000 can either be spread and allocated across the existing divisions, or placed into another surplus division, like a 14th division. So it still counts towards the plan assets for GASB purposes and our net pension liability, but it isn't directly associated with any one of the divisions.
Could we also create a pension trust fund that it could go into?
So the difference there would be that it wouldn't necessarily achieve the stabilization of the plan, because it wouldn't be counted towards the net plan assets.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then I have a question, maybe you know the answer. If, we do one, two, three, and seven, if later on in the year, we decide to bond out for a small portion, for certain divisions, would that change, and be able to change the 5.9 arc?
Or are we bound to the 5.9?
Or are we bound to the 5.9, because then, otherwise, we're stuck with the 5.9. If we bond some of it out, there, now we have the 5.9 plus a bond payment.
Madam Chair, I think we have resources here, if you'd like.
Yes, that's what I'm asking. Can anybody speak to that?
It wouldn't be a bad thing, though, because we'd be paying it down.
I don't know that we can afford both, is the problem. You know what I'm saying?
It would be less.
If we, yeah, okay. Tony.
Hello, I'm Tony Regevich, retail manager from MERS. Along with me is Leon Hank, MERS, Chief Financial Officer. And in the agreement, which I believe is part of your packet, correct? We stated what were the requirements of doing this, and I think we carefully discussed what the requirements were going to be, and I'm trying to find them specifically. And it's under D, right? 5D is the only one that I see, which says, "The employer agrees to submit additional contributions to MERS towards its UAL of 5.6 million dollars to be received by MERS no later than 12/31/2017. In an absence of proceeded, this additional contribution by the dates specified above, MERS receives the right to void disagreement and adjust the amortization schedule and required employer contributions accordingly to ensure the stabilization of the plan."
So I think what we're asking...
Yeah, that's the 5.6 we're asking about.
I understand. And I don't believe that we put in writing...
We're good with the 5.6. What I'm concerned about, I'm sorry, is the 5.9, if we agree that we're going to pay 5.9 million dollars a year, and then, as our annual required contribution, according to us, then if we bond out for a portion of that, are we still bound to pay the 5.9 plus the bond payment?
Because it should lower.
It should, it'll lower the arc, but then are we stuck paying the difference then, still between the arc and the 5.9?
We would not expect you to pay the 5.9 if you do a major bonding program.
We could revise it. Okay.
We would want to revise the agreement. We'd work with your administrative team to do that, and to come up with what's, I heard numbers like 80%. If you bonded for 80%, we, of course, would want to adjust those numbers. You'd still want to be paying proportionally the same amount of money. We'd want you to pay that, too. And so a commitment from us is, we would work with your administrative team and come up with a revised number, and it would be something less than 5.9 million, so that in total, your payments are about the same.
May I ask for clarification, though? Does that anticipate that the proceeds from any bond sale would be contributed to the plan assets?
Yes. They would have to be, you know, transmitted to us, and we manage those.
Why? Okay.
Why? Why can't we hold it in a pension as long as we're making our 5.9 payment? What difference does it make to you? It's our responsibility for the bond, not yours.
But my concern would be, if we make the 5.9 payment, can we still make the bond payment?
Well, it would be, you'd have to adjust the plan if you did the bonding, so.
I believe that the law, if I recall correctly, is that if you sell pension obligation bonds, that money has to be contributed to your pension and pension agency, which would be MERS.
No, it does not. It can be placed in a revocable trust, and as long as we make the payments, they, you know, no, that's not, because the bond, if we put it in a trust, those monies could only be used to pay our payments for our pension obligation.
The issue is, do you count it in, does MERS count it in their fund balance? If it's not in their coffers to invest, they would not. It would be in the irrevocable trust, per your point, it would be allocated for that, but they wouldn't count it as money that they have inside.
So basically, what I'm saying is, a portion of the 5.9 that we owe to them would come out of our general fund, and a portion of it would come out of an irrevocable trust that would be set up using the bond, correct?
No, because they're just saying that we have to take the bond money, and we have to give it all to MERS.
That's what, I think, Commissioner Wheelock, that's what the state requires.
That's not what John Axe told us.
They have to approve that.
No, I think it's...
The state treasury has to approve any pension bond. It's done on the amortization schedule that they want. It goes into their coffers, if you want to count it towards your fund balance. Then they invest it accordingly, how do they invest it? If we keep it separate, yes, it's designated for pension reduction, but they don't count it, and if they don't count it, they can't lower the cost of the amortization schedule.
Okay, well, and as long as we can make the 5.9, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
But would this...
But I disagree. Public, I think the public act, and the way all the other counties have done it in Michigan, is that the bond proceeds go to MERS. Jacks up the percentage of funding. It's the other money that you draw in from other sources.
I guess there's no point in doing it, then, if that's what...
I don't think you have it both ways. I don't think that you can do the bond, have them count it, and then hold the money aside.
Yeah, I don't know.
No, you can't.
Am I right? Am I right?
That's right.
You can if you put it in their account, though.
Now, yeah, for your point, Commissioner, if the trust that they have is the trust that's outside the 5.9, that the trust is set up, and we use their investment vehicles, they have 13 currently, and we would make the decision whether we'd want to go at a 7.5 or a lower discount rate, the less in volatility, then because it's in their coffers, they would count it, and they could lower it.
Well, that's generous of them.
Jody.
I don't know that there is precedent of a municipality setting up an external trust and investing those assets, using the proceeds to make the annual required contribution to MERS, and paying the bond payment out of general fund, is what I've just understood. The theory being here, the law is written such that the bond issuance would increase the level of funding status. So I don't know if the state's stance would differ from GASB's stance on this matter, but when we were pursuing the concept of a pension stabilization trust, and whether or not we could include any assets held outside of MERS towards our total funding status, I received an exposure draft from GASB, where they had been asked this very question by a number of municipalities, in all sorts of different ways of, well, what if we set it up this way, and what if we set it up that way? And the answer was always no.
Yeah, I agree with you, because what you're saying is, is that all bond proceeds go to MERS, to increase the fund balance.
Correct. That's the only way to have it count towards our total net pension.
Yeah, that's, to me, that's the only way to do it, whether it's right or wrong, so.
Did you have something? Go ahead.
When we had the discussion with John Axe, and I brought it up, that if we could, now, don't mistake this for me being in favor of bonds.
Oh, I never do that.
Period. Don't do that. If we bonded this building, borrowed money against this, and used a bond to buy this building back, it would, that bond would be at a lesser interest rate. And then, we can do whatever we want with that money, because it's just a building. It's bond from a building proceeds. So, at that point, it may possibly be able to go into a trust. We wouldn't be bonding money for a pension, we'd be bonding money for a building.
I'm bonding for a building, I'm bonding for a new jail.
Well, it's, you know, pensioner, you know, but...
No, I think Ron's right.
Yes. So, okay, so, to move on here, so the answer to my question of whether or not the 5.9 million dollars could in the future be adjusted, the answer is yes. Based on some of the other things that we do, we may, if we are going to make a large contribution through a bond, through some other means, that number could be adjusted in the future.
We would be open to that, and we'll work with your management team to work that out, with your goals, to try to stay in that 5.9 million dollar budget number. That's what we've worked so hard over the last 12 months to try to get to that.
Okay, Sonny.
I have a question, and I'm not sure whether these guys can answer, or Heidi's still hiding back there in the corner. I know she's there.
She's there.
Is there an advantage to us, if we're making an annual contribution of 5.9 million dollars, is there an advantage to us to make that payment in April instead of December?
Yes.
Because if you invest the money earlier, then we should get a better return on the money during that course of the year. If we're, you know, if we're committing ourselves to an annual contribution of 5.9 million dollars, you know, Heidi can tell me, I'm going to say sometime in April or May, we have all of the tax revenue that we're going to get for practical purposes, maybe we're better to invest that. Heidi, why don't you tell me if I'm wrong? But it seems to me like, if we're committing to a 5.9 million dollars, and MERS says there's an advantage to us to make that payment earlier in the year, instead of later in the year, we should certainly consider that.
For sure. Actually, June is my low, looking at cash flow for the county, June is the lowest of the month, so July would be the preferred month, if we were to make an early contribution, just because...
We make it six months earlier than we make it when we make it in December.
Yes.
There should be an advantage to us for that.
There would be an advantage.
It's an advantage to the county of when we have the money, and it's also an advantage to MERS for their investment purposes.
And just to make a note on the, if we were to issue bonds on, like, the governmental center, they would be tax-exempt bonds, so we would have limited in what we could do with those funds due to the arbitrage. We can't, if we issue tax-exempt bonds, we can't invest them in the market like we would with a pension bond, because those are taxable, and that is the only vehicle that we are allowed to do without the arbitrage issue, so just to...
Can I ask her a question?
Yeah.
What is your understanding of, if we were to go out and bond, let's say, 20 million dollars for our pension debt, what is your recommendation that we would do with that money? Give it all to MERS?
I like the idea that you had proposed of putting it with, I know Oakland County did do that. They put, they invested it on their own. I don't know the legality. I know theirs were OPEB, as opposed to pensions.
They're not MERS. So that makes a difference, I think?
So, if legally we could, I like the idea of having an outside investor, but I don't know that the law will allow. But I do, I do like that idea.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So on this, numbers one, two, three, and seven, did we have any public comment? Gordy, I know Gordy wanted to talk.
You guys are working it down.
I know. We'll give you three minutes, Mr. Lapointe.
Gordy Lapointe, 6375 Plum Drive, Acme Township. Just to recap, I think you guys agreed upon, is if you kick in 5.9 million, excuse me, 5.6 million now, commit 5.9 million from wherever, whether you bond for it, get a millage, or just take out a general fund, for 16 years, that's what you're signing up for right now. Okay? I've got a couple of questions. Last time I was here, after going through all of this, I asked the question about the annual employer contribution. I said, "How did the county get in such a hole, they must not have been making their annual required contribution?" And I was told by MERS, I know, in fact, over this whole period of time, they've always been making this required contribution. And I think the chair confirmed that fact. So my question now is, you've been making the required contribution forever. Now, to a person that isn't an expert in this, here's my take on this. How did the county therefore... How did the county therefore, um, in 1990 go from 101% funded to 49% funded in 2005, when every year you were making your annual required contribution? I mean, to someone just sitting there listening, you go, this doesn't make any sense. And during that same period of time, MERS hit their target of what the market was going to return, it was a little over 8%. So I just can't fathom how that worked, and it's never been answered to date. Um, then I would ask the question, based upon that uncertainty, you've now got a commitment, you're going to lay out 5.6 million, 5.9 million a year for 16 years. At the end of 16 years, where do you stand? Are we 100% funded, 60% funded? Where are we in that, and how much are still unfunded in terms of dollars? I mean, what's the projected, if you do what you're asked to do, and if they hit their numbers of 7.75, are we free and clear after 16 years? And I would think that somebody would ask that question. You may be signing up, and, what, still be 50, 60% unfunded. So, I think, if you can make that number clear, or some estimate, or their forecast, or their projection, that would be very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordy. Mr. Gilman. On a different topic, I'll...
Well, it's this topic, it's the pensions itself.
No, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Um, you know, hearing, hearing the thought of borrowing money to then invest it in a separate account, does that really, I mean, if, if, if somebody was going to, was going to sell us bonds, or, and, wouldn't they just invest that money into wherever we're going to put our money to make whatever we're going to make? I mean, that, that doesn't even make any sense. I mean, it, it implies ultimately that we're willing to take more of a, more of a risk, and maybe get a higher return. Should we be taking any risk? And, and I, so I kinda, with all due respect, and, and I think we have pretty decent investment strategies with the county, I think they've done a fine job, but, um, first and foremost, I don't think we should be bonding at all, and I'll, and I'll stand up and I'll say that. If, if we have to bring it before the people for a millage vote, let the chips fall where they may. Um, I also look at it this way, and this'll get me a little bit back on the other topic, is that, it's like smokers, you know? When you quit smoking, I mean, I, I smoked for a lot of years, and I quit 23 years ago. And every time that I thought about quitting, I came up with another reason why I shouldn't be quitting. Another reason why that, the cigarettes, I mean, it's an addiction. This, 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 uh, we have to have the best toys, we have to have the most coolest pathways, and this and that. We have to be realistic. This addiction is killing us. We're on the doorstep of bankruptcy, and we still have to have all of our toys. They're just, it can't, you can't have it both ways. So, anyhow, that's, I'll have to say on that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will bring it back to the board. Any further discussion before we take a vote on these particular points?
Do you have to add into the, the motion about, you know, that this is subject, uh, number three would be subject to change?
No, I don't think that that's, no, I think, so we're voting on one, two, three, and seven. All set? Bonnie, let's do a roll call.
I just want some clarification. There is a resolution in your packet, page 105, and we want to make sure that we omit, I'm assuming, where it starts, be it further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners adopts the MERS retiree healthcare funding.
Yes.
So we, we omit that paragraph, this following one, and the following one.
Mm-hmm.
And everything else in this resolution is fine, just omit those three things out of the resolution, is that correct?
Well, I didn't think we were voting on the resolution, I thought we were voting on the bullet points.
That's what's included in your packet, it's all...
No, in our packet, on page 103, is a seven bullet point, and I believe that's what we...
And it's followed by a resolution, so do you want the resolution totally thrown out?
I'm not voting on the resolution, I'm voting on the bullet points on page 103, that was the motion.
So would we need a new resolution to...
Why don't we use the text on page 105?
That's the resolution.
That's a resolution.
That's what he, that's what she's saying.
That she doesn't want to vote on.
Okay.
So that's why I'm getting clarification. You have a resolution in here, you have a memo with a following resolution, and do you want the resolution removed, and just have it say the four things that are in this bullet point memorandum instead?
My understanding of the motion was, it was the bullet points one, two, three, and seven from page 103, isn't that correct?
Yes, so we...
And that's what the resolution is, the resolution is the bullet points...
Resolution follows the bullet points, so if we remove...
Exactly.
Numbers four, five, and six from the resolution, which begin, the Board of Commissioners adopts MERS retiree healthcare funding, appropriates and authorizes the transfer of 250...
The resolution has two pages that precede it. I don't want to apply spec the resolution.
It's, they're just the wherethes, I mean, they're just, what's, what we're voting on is the be it further resolved.
I would attest to that, I, I wrote the resolution, and I, I literally copied and pasted most of the language from the memo into the resolution so that they're mere images.
I, I understand that, I'm saying, I, I thought we were voting on four bullet points, not on all of, I'm not prepared to approve all of the verbiage of this resolution.
No, so Bonnie is saying, the resolution, what we are voting on is this resolution minus these three paragraphs. Are there other things in it that...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Who's the motion maker? Who made the motion?
Dan made the motion.
I did, yeah.
Do you feel comfortable just stating your motion?
Okay, I'll try. Uh, I make the motion that we adopt bullet points one, two, three, and seven. Is that right?
Okay.
Okay. And then Gordy. And we have a support for that. So if we, in fact, do that, we pretty much void the entire resolution that's on the following pages.
That's fine.
And we just have a motion to enact those four bullet points.
One, two, three, and seven, on page 103, yes, that's it.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That's what you would like, I think that's what we're all, okay.
Thank you.
That's the motion and the second.
Did you want to...
Let's do a roll call.
Okay.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lethrop?
Yes.
Mayer?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Gorfalek?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Yay.
Okay, so that's done.
We did something.
And that's, in my opinion, that's a big win, that's what we went for for last year, and that's what we, you know, wanted from MERS, and so that's what we did. So, we'll move on to a different part of this, as far as, do we want to direct administration to investigate a buyout of the healthcare benefits?
Yes.
Well, we can look at everything, I mean, I don't know what it would cost us, you know, where would you get the money for it, but, I mean, everything could be looked at.
Do you want to direct them to see what that, what that should, okay, so I don't think we need a motion for that, can we, can we look at that?
We'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, so then that sort of puts on the back burner a, a trust for the OPEB, so that, based on that. Now, as far as a trust, do we trust for additional monies that, that we are contributing, as far as monies that we get from these land sales, things like that, how do we, we need to talk about how we want to handle that, because we had expressed opinions that we didn't really want to set up the trust, possibly set up the trust that, that MERS is offering through them. So what, Bob? Let's talk about that.
Well, if it doesn't count towards our unfunded liability for MERS, then I don't know where we gain anything by putting it in a separate fund.
Except just control over it.
Why don't we... Yeah, I, I like the idea of the separate trust, because I want the next board that comes along to not be able to poach that money, and so that it's going to be there to pay down, I mean, we have to make a commitment that there's going to be money to pay this off.
Yeah, I, I mean, but you, you do the same thing when you give it to MERS, I mean, you know, I...
May, may?
Yes.
Irrevocable trusts have been set up for healthcare before, MERS has one. The state has never set up an irrevocable trust for pensions.
Yeah.
We'd be the first, though we have done a great deal of due diligence, we believe we can do it, um, but then there'd be the cost of doing it and getting it set up, and then you'd have to manage that. So then the question is, who manages it, what's the criteria? Well, you'd have to say, we have a pension board in place, and they would probably be the ones that would do it. If you eliminate the pension board, then you've got to figure out what your criteria is, and how else, how you do that.
Check with the College Foundation and see how they've been doing it very successfully for 25, 30 years, I mean, you know.
Sonny?
They've got millions of dollars, their management's...
And then I think Dan had another one, or somebody did.
I guess I made this simple, why, why don't we just take the money we have from properties and give it to MERS and pay down our bill?
Because we might want to use it for something else.
Well, I, you know, I think, I think the board has made the commitment that if we sell these parcels of property, that that money is going to be immediately used to pay down the pension debt.
That was the policy we just passed.
I believe that, I believe that's the policy.
That was in the policy that we approved, yeah.
So, as far as I'm concerned, you know, at least in, in my little brain, I take, I take the $255 proceeds, or $255,000 proceeds from the sale of the, of the Whitewater parcel...
Hand it over.
And I make the 5.6 million dollar payment, but then I also send another $255,000.
Yeah.
You know, and that money goes to pay down my unfunded capacity.
Yeah, why not?
I don't, I don't see, as far as I'm concerned, I, I'm pretty confident that MERS is not going to refuse to take an additional payment of $255,000.
No, they're not. Tony?
I would just like to, to hopefully clear up something. For the retiree health funding vehicle trust, that is a trust that is, will be directed by the administration or the board here, the board chair, they have, as Tom said, 13 different investments, those investment options, and they're, they're index funds, they're bond funds, they're fully diversified, many different options. At any given time, the authorities of the board would be able to make changes to that when and if you see fit. And the same thing with that, um, we call it ISP, it's Investment Services Program. You, you, you put that money into those funds, and you can see what, what funds you'd like to put it into. It was, it's not in the MERS pension trust, it's in the ISP. You can utilize those dollars as, as you see fit, and you can invest from very conservative, they're very risky, fully diversified. Those fees are separate from our, the way we manage defined benefit. So for what we've done in the past in defined benefit, where you didn't have any control, and these two other trusts you do. And so I wanted to make that clear, because it seemed like...
But they only address health benefit, they only address the OPEB, they do not talk about the pension debt. What we're talking about here is making additional contributions to the pension debt.
Understood, and what, what I'm trying to say is that the ISP trust, you can put from your land sale monies in there, and at any point in time, if you wanted to put that into the MERS pension trust, you could.
Oh, okay.
While it's in that ISP fund, you manage it as you see fit, in whatever investment strategy you see fit, and make changes when you would like.
The reason we recommended that is it did everything the irrevocable trust would do, and give us the credit in terms of improving our funding balance, that's why, that's why we...
So, a correction there, so the ISP would not count towards our funding status, but it would allow us, whether we bonded, or we stuck to the 5.9 million, at some point in the future, to stabilize those payments should they change.
So we would be able to use the money from that trust toward the 5.9, if we found that we couldn't make that payment, whatever was in the trust at that time, the ISP trust, we could move over to shore that up?
Yeah, so all previous references to that irrevocable pension stabilization trust, this ISP would allow us to accomplish, but without the cost or the unknowns, because it would have been precedent-setting to set up our own trust, and then have the limitations under the IRS Section 115 about whether or not we could invest those assets in securities, for instance.
Madam Chair, can we hold this conversation for another time?
Yes.
I mean, I just feel as though we're brain dead, a lot of this is kind of, you know, flying over our heads, and...
I think, I think that the bonding discussion and the discussion about setting up the trust can wait?
Yep, I think it should.
I think, let it kind of ruminate a little bit.
Yeah, I'd motion to table the, the trust discussion.
Okay, I would second that.
Do you want a specific date?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Do you want a specific date?
You want a specific date on that?
21st?
Talk about the, we can do that, we can bring it back on the 21st. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, that kind of addresses that. We'll wait on some of that, but we did pass the...
And Madam Chair, can I just recommend that, that, you know, we've, we've accomplished a lot tonight with regard to the pension, I mean, we took a very big bite...
Yes.
...out of it, and I would like to continue the discussion of all the remaining issues that were brought up on the 21st, and if we can't tackle them all, then, you know, we're, we're having meaningful dialogue, we're moving things forward, but, you know, I, I think that it isn't necessary for us to do it all tonight.
No, correct, I got it. Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, let's be ready on the 21st to make a motion for the millage, make a motion for the bonding, and let's get this junk done.
Why not?
I agree.
Um, so that we're done with the discussion, and if they pass, then the voters will go decide.
No more analysis, no more...
Yeah, because I, I mean, we can't continue this talk about all this forever.
Come with what you want to do.
So I would, I would assume on the 21st will be a discussion on the millage, then a discussion on the bonding, and a vote, yes.
And we're gonna, and we're gonna hear about what properties are available to, to us, what's, what's going on with that.
Excellent.
Okay? Okay, good job. Old unfinished business. Uh, Chris? I want to talk about hauler licenses and solid waste management, kind of update on that?
Yeah, I mean, maybe, maybe Commissioner Wheelock, since he's, he's the one with the historical knowledge about solid waste planning, maybe he can lead the discussion. No, I joke, I did put together a memo, I know that this has been a topic of late at prior board meetings, what do we do with the hauler license, licenses? At the first meeting in May, I did indicate to the board that Jenda Han and I were going to talk to Christina Miller, who is the point person when it comes to solid waste planning for the state of Michigan. So we had that, we had that conversation with her on May 8th. She confirmed, I think, what, what was kind of already known, and that is, if you want to, if you want to make tweaks, if you want to revise, so long as your ordinance is not contrary to your solid waste management plan, it's okay. But if we're talking about, we just want to get rid of hauler licenses, which we can do, because they're not mandated by state law, then that really does create a conflict with their solid waste management plan, since they are referenced in the plan, and so therefore then we have to go through the steps of amending the, the solid waste plan. So, so in essence, I'm not, I'm not asking you to one, one way or the other, I'm just telling you that, you know, that if, if you do want to eliminate the hauler licenses requirement, then we probably should go through the, the amendment process.
Cheryl?
Do we have a resource recovery department?
It's outsourced.
Do, do we, as a county, have a resource recovery department?
No, the, the, no, we don't, that function's being handled by administration through the, also through the use of IRIS Waste Management, who handles a chunk of that.
So, I, I read with great interest this, uh, this ordinance that we put together. Great piece of work, lots, lots of stuff, lots of legalese, all sorts of detail, just goes on and on forever, and, uh, I was especially interested in, let's see, 3.2, specific license conditions, SubG quarterly reports, which requires that the 15th day of January, April, July, and October of each year, the Resource Recovery Department is going to document the cubic yards and tons of solid waste, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Does that happen?
Yes, they report to me.
Okay, and this is how we came up with a $100,000 plus payment from waste management or whatever, because we finally got a report, or...
They've been sending reports through Sarah Adams, and then, um, when they asked us to collect on the hauler licenses and the other, um, fees that they... they-
Tipping fee.
Tipping fees. They started putting the reports to us, too. And we collect them and we forward them on to IRIS.
My concern is that there is an extremely detailed process in this ordinance. And my concern, and it's what prompted me to ask the questions in the first place, is what are we doing with this? Are we enforcing it? Do we have someone that's looking at this? Do we have somebody that's protecting our interests? Because this is extremely detailed. This is extremely, I mean, it's a great piece of work. I'm not kidding. It's marvelous. It covers us right down to batteries and, you know, blah, blah, blah. But who's watching the hen house? Who's making sure this is being enforced? And if it's not being enforced, then why are we doing it? I'm sorry?
Who wants to answer?
You're exactly right. It is a very detailed ordinance. You know, with the last, basically with the last two revisions of the solid waste plan, especially the last one, you know, we cleaned up so much language and required detailed reporting. We identified approved sources by which the solid waste from Grand Traverse County could be taken to. Those are also licenses and identified in the solid waste plan.
But what I'm reading in here, Sonny, it appears to me that these people that come to us and they pay us 50 bucks, we give them a license, then they get to haul whatever they haul and dump it wherever they dump it. We never hear another thing from them until the next year when they come back and they give us 50 bucks and we give them a license again. Would that be accurate? Would that be pretty close to the truth?
I have asked that. I'm not sure of my role. I was asked to collect the money, collect the tipping fees. And so we remind people to send in their reports. I've asked that they put up signs, they make it a little, you know, at the place where they're dumping to make sure that people have their hauler licenses. Jen and I had talked about having a sign put up. I mean, it's not really my enforcement. I'm just kind of in that middle ground of, here, you can collect this money and see if you can get those reports, too.
And please, Bonnie, don't, I'm not trying to be critical of anybody.
Oh, no, I know. It's kind of like, there's no place.
What I'm looking at is a policy that if we had somebody full-time-
We don't.
And we don't. They might be able to keep an eye on whether we're doing what we're saying we're going to do when we license these people, but we're not doing it.
Similar to the honor system.
Well, guess what? The world is full of dishonorable people.
And they do tattle on each other, too.
I know, it's a shocker.
They tattle on each other.
I'm just really uncomfortable with us giving people a piece of paper that say, you have our seal of approval, that you can pick stuff up and you can dump it, and we're going to trust that they're going to do for their 50 bucks, 50 whole bucks. It's just, it kind of drives me crazy. I'm sorry. Obviously, I'm driving you crazy.
It used to be 25.
Okay, oh, great.
It used to be 25.
Now it's 50.
I think the important piece to note about the hauler licenses is more an educational piece to the haulers of where the designated disposal facilities are. And that we have a list of designated disposal facilities. Those facilities are approved by Grand Traverse County.
And can we eliminate 17 pages of policy? Please?
Probably at least part of it.
Please.
But the point is, if you start eliminating much out of that policy-
Then we're not in compliance with the state.
Then we're not in compliance with our solid waste, or our solid waste management plan. And then we go back to a 17-member citizen committee made up of a whole bunch of people and a lot of time.
Bob says I need a Snickers. I just need a Snickers, okay?
We don't provide snacks. Take a deep breath.
No, but I'm making light of this, but this is a serious potential liability.
If we're going to make significant changes to the ordinance or the licensing, we are required by law to revise our solid waste management plan.
I understand that. I got that three meetings ago.
So do you want us to do that?
I'm just saying, this is the kind of stuff that gives government a bad name, okay? A 17-page policy that we don't enforce. It's bad. It's bad business, guys. So I'm open to suggestions.
But it keeps us in compliance.
I don't want to convene a 15, sorry?
But it keeps us in compliance.
So the choices are, keep doing what we're doing.
Convene a 15-person blah, 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 and go through a 20-month jumping-
Didn't it, I mean, they just got reviewed.
About three or four months to do it.
Okay, guys, I mean, I will forever shut up about this if you all think that we ought to just move on. But, I mean, forever. Forever. Do you want me to shut up forever on this?
On this?
Just let it go?
I'm just teasing you. Come on, it's 9 o'clock.
I think Chris is right. We just can, we have to make a decision here sometime very soon about whether or not we're going to continue operating under the ordinance and solid waste plan that we have, or commit the time and effort to revise it. Now, I'm not, you know, I know Sarah and I know what she does, but I don't know whether she can help us with this. You know, I know, I was very involved the last time and I did about half of the public hearings that were done in the townships and the villages. Because after you do the revised plan, you have to hold public hearings-
Understood.
And you have to get approvals in each of the governmental entities in the community.
Yes.
And, you know, we were very successful the last go-around and it, you know, that was, you know, very timely we got it done. There was a lot of work went into it behind the scenes that nobody has a clue.
The only other option would be you reestablish your resource recovery department, which I don't know if that's even realistic, since, well, you'd have to-
Well, why are you shaking your head no?
It was just eliminated in '15?
October 2015.
Yeah.
Well, and it was an department that was eliminated with no expenditure of general fund monies.
Right.
In other words, it was self-sustaining?
100% self-sustaining.
And it was responsible for taking care of this?
Yes.
Okay, can we have some sort of an update on that?
On the possibility of reinstating that?
Absolutely.
And we can ask administration to look into that for us.
Can we look at it?
We had two people, full-time people before, and we had budget cuts and-
But if it was self-sustaining and it paid its way-
It was self-sustaining with two people.
And we have a policy that we're not enforcing, and I mean, it's not something to be proud of.
But just because they were here, though, doesn't mean that that was still, you should stay misused at the facilities.
Understood. And that's our fault, too, if they weren't doing their jobs, so.
So if that's an option and we, okay?
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
See if we can do it.
Okay. We are moving on. Yes?
Shortest answer of the night.
The next answer is going to be short, too, because you're up with the update on the administrator search.
That's right.
What do you have to tell us?
Well, the deadline is June 12th, and I wouldn't be surprised if he accepts them the next morning, because he's flexible. James Fertino tells me applications still coming in, expecting a push this week as it reaches the deadline. We started vetting a few high-ranking candidates this week. The board should expect a written report from him next week.
Okay. Last I heard, I think he sent me an email that said they had, I think, 26 from across the nation, 26 applicants. So. Moving on, we have new business, Elected Officials' Guide to Emergency Management. I went to the emergency management class. It was a two-hour class several weeks ago about what we do in case of an emergency. So I brought this back. This is part of your packet. Our role is actually quite simple. Mr. Greg Bird is here. Thank you very much. And he will tell us briefly what our role is and offer the next class, correct? That's what you said. In a nutshell, our role is to, my role is to declare a state of emergency if I have to and tell Greg to do what he needs to do, and then back off until I am needed to make another big decision as far as asking the state for additional resources and things like that. Am I wrong?
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
That's perfect. But just to take into consideration, all the elected officials in the county, some most do hold full-time jobs after the craziness of the summer. We're going to schedule one in the evening sometime. We'll try and poll and do a poll. It's two hours. We're bringing in the state police. It's really a pretty good idea to let, especially new elected officials, know what emergency management, not financial emergency management, does for the local jurisdiction and what in return the elected officials can do to help, all in the benefit of, if a disaster occurs, recovering quickly and efficiently.
Because we're the ones that people look to when really bad things happen. What are we doing for them? So it is, I thought it was very informative to know what kinds of things constitute a disaster, what, who has what roles, and how everybody kind of works together to get that done. And so we'll have another one-
Yes.
-in the evening. We kind of suspected that having it during the day was not a good idea. Well, it was, for some it is, but we also would like to have one in the evening, so that will help.
We won't do it on a commissioner's meeting Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We are moving on to second public comment. There's nobody left. I think we're good with second public comment.
Public comment?
Okay. Department of Health and Human Services appointment.
I would move that we appoint John Rizzo.
I'm losing it. Motion by Commissioner Gore-Flette, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Discussion.
I just think, I mean, again, we have three wonderful candidates. I just think with this tie-in, with dealing with that agency already, I think it's a good fit, so.
Anybody else have any comments? For or against?
Well, I- I support the other candidate. They're both wonderful.
We had three.
Pardon?
We had three. We had Eric as well, so.
Oh, yeah. I mean-
Had a possible re-up. Right? Oh, no, that was different.
No, that's the next one.
I support Georgia.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so.
Well, we're just discussing it, right?
Yeah, we're in discussion. That's fair.
So there's a variety of reasons for that. I think she's, her experience, her extended experience in dealing with seniors and her experience in the healthcare business. I don't know why you'd want to do it. You should be tired of the county by now. But, and John's business or firm helped myself and my dad greatly at a point, so I have great affection for you. But that's what I want to say.
Okay. And I, go ahead.
I would say that with Georgia on the Commission on Aging and to have squirreled away as much money as she had, I think that would be a good fit for the Pavilions as well, to be watching the books and to be, you know, keeping a sharp eye on that.
So I want to say I'm impressed by all three candidates. I would encourage Eric, if you're listening, or I will let him know myself later. I like that he has attended the Leadership Grand Traverse, that's a great program, and that he wants to be part of leadership roles on various boards. So I would encourage Eric to continue to show interest in getting involved. So, but I won't oppose Mr. Rizzo on this one.
Can I just add with regard to Mr. Rizzo? He is the only, the only person who applied who has actually had experience with something besides the Pavilions as far as the other things that DHHS does, which frankly, seniors are only a very small portion of what DHHS deals with. My primary job is representing abused and neglected children, and that's a huge part of what they do. So I think that he has a much broader experiential base, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, let's do a roll call then. Lathrop?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, to Rizzo.
Wielak?
Yes.
Klaus?
No.
Gore-Flette?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Pass. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Rizzo. We will see you at the next DHHS and Pavilions meetings.
Thank you.
Okay? The next is something that I added. We have Nicole Miller, who has been serving for several years on the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Authority Board. Nicole is very involved in that board. Actually, she was just voted as the chair of Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board. And her term is up and she has asked that we reappoint her to her position. We also have an open position on Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board for a provider, a mental health provider, that we haven't gotten very many applications for, so I put that out there, that we also have one more open spot for a mental health provider. But at the moment, I'm, I will make the motion myself to reappoint Nicole Miller to the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Board for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2020.
Support. I guess I'm still confused as to why we're not going through a process of posting for that opening and then going back through, because I know we do it on other boards.
We do it on other boards where there are openings.
No, we've done it, too, with, I'm pretty sure with the reappointments, I thought we did, too.
Well, I think we've had-
We've had other reappointments where we just, if they are interested in re-upping, we, I believe we have the option to-
Well, how many years has she served?
Three.
So she's already served three.
Mm-hmm.
And she was just voted the chair.
And this, I don't know, and this isn't anything against her. I'm just saying that, to me, we should have a process where we have that open, because, you know, we've got a lot of boards where there's people that have been serving for a long time, for good or bad.
And they keep saying they want to be reappointed and again and again.
You know, so.
We had a series of policies that only allowed people to serve, I think it was 12 years maximum at any position. That was two terms as a road commissioner, because they're six-year terms. You know, all of our different commissions are different lengths of terms. Somewhere along the way that went away, I don't, you know, I'm not sure I know why. But the fact is that, you know, we post positions all the time. We rarely get candidates, and even more rarely do we get qualified candidates. The mental health board has a huge learning curve. Their whole governance program and everything else is just a huge learning curve in the services they provide. That's why the makeup of that board is so specific. It requires, it requires family members and patients, it requires, you know, providers, it requires people from the different governmental entities that are involved. And Great Lakes Community Health, what, is now six counties?
It's five.
Five counties? A whole batch of them anyway.
But even if you, even if you posted, and, yeah, she was the only one that applied, to me, at least you went through the motions. I mean, on all the other boards, and, yeah, there's probably other requirements, but I know on the other boards that I've been involved with, we've had some quality candidates apply. And again, this is, nothing against her or whatever, I just think the process should be that we do the same, but.
This appointment expired in March?
Yes.
And that could be all wet.
And we're just getting around to doing something about it in June?
I thought that we had already. I thought that it had already been done. Sorry. I kind of dropped the ball on it. And I thought that it had already been-
Posted?
I thought that it had, we had already reappointed her. And I realized that it had, it had been-
I'm not personally comfortable reappointing.
I'm not personally comfortable reappointing. I mean, I'd be happy to reappoint if she was the only one who applied, but it just feels to me like, you know, we get people coming in here who want, I mean, we just had Parks and Rec, and we had a bunch of people that were interested, and we had a couple of other, you know, I mean, people seem to be maybe reinvigorated or something, but I haven't had one yet where we have just had one person to choose from.
Yeah.
It just feels unfair, you know, to, oh, this time we won't, we'll just reappoint. Well, then the next one comes up, and, oh, we're gonna post. Well, why?
I mean, I know it's more work for us in the long run in administration, but, like I said, to me, I guess you would...
Paying for penny and for pound, right?
Yeah, yeah. You need a little...
And I literally mean a penny, okay?
You at one time required both new candidates and existing candidates to interview for appointments.
I did.
I know the state board I'm on, I had to reapply for my reappointment.
So, do you want to just withdraw your motion and then direct administration to post the opening?
What are you saying, Chris? Can't hear you.
Withdraw the motion.
Can you withdraw, can you just withdraw our motion? You can either vote on the motion that's on the table, or you can withdraw it and direct that...
Set in the second.
Yes.
Yeah. We don't want to vote on it if it's going to be voted down, because then...
Right, that doesn't feel...
So, because she will continue to serve until we do that.
Absolutely.
She will continue to serve until we appoint a replacement.
Which could be her. Wrong seconded. I can withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
With that, and we can have administration, Chris Kramer is listening, she always is.
Maybe not this late.
Well, go ahead, and post for that.
Yeah. Like I said, I just think...
And then we would, who would like to be, when we do get applicants, we might as well do this now, who would like to be the ad hoc? It doesn't have to be all of us. There would need to be three of us.
I know, they're looking at us now.
I am the vice-chair of Community Mental Health.
I'm happy to serve as is well.
Yes, I will.
So, the three of us will decide.
There you go.
Okay. If it's that important to you, that is the way we will do it.
Again, I just think...
I want you to be comfortable with it.
It's the process, a regular open position, and I don't want the public to lose out. And again, you know, we may have, she may be the only one that applies, but I just think it should be fair across the board, so.
And that is the way that we will do it, if that is what you would like.
It's the only way we would have it, fair.
That's right. Get that man a Snickers.
Chris Kramer says we will repost.